All right, so, welcome to the June 9th, 2020 School Board Meeting of the Shorewood School District. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Our first agenda item is to adopt the agenda. I'll take a motion.
Pablo, so move.
Clark, second.
Thank you. I would like to table item 4D, the 2020-2021 budget options to the next June meeting, since we weren't able to get the documents for this meeting. Any other changes?
No.
No, all right. So, any further discussion? Okay, so hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Thank you.
A second, Clark.
And so, all in favor, I'll take a roll call. Hillary?
Hi.
Pablo?
Hi.
Clark?
Hi.
Emily?
Hi.
And aye from Paru, so, motion passes. So I'm going to ask if, as we move forward, if you're on this call to mute yourself, I can't tell if people are muted, to mute yourself so that we can hear better, and so the the sound is better. Okay, so, Dr. Davis, can you remind us of our overarching results?
Yes, our overarching result for the school district of Shorewood is our students are leaders who challenge themselves to grow and achieve academically, pursue their passions, navigate change, learn continuously, and contribute to the common good.
Come on now.
Great, thank you. Awards and recognitions for tonight?
Yes, first off, I want to, congratulations to all of our Shorewood students who'll be finishing their school year this Thursday, and also, obviously, to the SHS Senior Class of 2020, who already have completed their school year last week. This wasn't the school year we certainly all expected, but the resilience our students showed in the face of challenges was inspiring to all of us, and we're proud of all of them. So special recognition to our Atwater Plus 6th grade grad, transition at SIS next year, SIS 8th grade graduates, who are transitioning to the high school, and we just had a nice event for them, the Shorewood Transition Program graduates, and then the SHS Class of 2020, as I mentioned before, all transitioning into new surroundings. We are hopeful that we can have the, an in-person graduation ceremony for the Class of 2020 on August 2nd. So we'll have more information on that as we get into July, but we're hopeful we can send them off in person. So, but we do wish everybody luck, and thanks for all your hard work and perseverance through an unusual school year. Also wanted to congratulate and thank two staff members who are retiring on Thursday after many years of service in the district. First of all, Atwater 6th grade teacher Jeff Cartier and SIS Head Custodian Mike Barickmell. So we're forever grateful for both of your years of service, and for both of you for your years of service in support of our students, and we'll be posting a tribute to both of them later this week. So best of luck to both of them in their future endeavors, and thank you for your service. Next, I want to recognize SHS Junior Eric Lucas for his bravery and courage over the past few days. Eric and his peers led an amazing Black Lives Matter rally in March on Saturday that thousands of North Shore residents participated in. Thanks to everyone who came out in support for an important cause and supporting our students. Eric also delivered an important message to all of us yesterday at a press conference, words that I think we can all use to strengthen our resolve towards creating our a more equitable school system and a more equitable community. So, thank you to Eric for your continued leadership and his classmates for the tremendous work that they've done over the last couple of days, and we look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Congratulations to SHS Senior Julia Pell. Recently learned that she is a college-sponsored Merit Scholarship Award winner to the National Merit University Scholarship. Julia will receive the scholarship annually, up to four years, for undergraduate study at Tufts University. So congratulations to Julia. Congratulations to two Shorewood Intermediate School students, Ariel Higgins and Ashley Sloman, who were recognized by National Public Radio on June 3rd with an Honorable Mention Award for their podcast entries submitted to the NPR Student Podcast Competition. They created the podcast titled Welcome to Black America towards the end of last school year while they were 6th graders at Atwater, and submitted it to the competition this April. Their work is currently posted on the NPR website, and you can listen to Welcome Black America by visiting also our district website or Facebook page. In their podcast, Ariel and Ashley discussed police brutality and its impact on the psyche of black youth. Specific cases are examined, and the hosts respond viscerally to the impact of police violence unanswered by the justice system in America. All music and scripting is original by Ariel and Ashley. So, great work and congratulations. And last, for athletics, we want to say congratulations to all of the Shorewood High School athletic teams. Shorewood High School was recently named a statewide WFN Champion for the Medium School District across the state. WFN Cup is awarded to the top athletic schools in the state of Wisconsin, determined through a point system based on state playoffs and tournament success across all sports across the entire state. And Shore number one, the number one high school in the medium schools category. So, great work to all of our athletes and coaches, and we look forward to another successful year coming up. And that concludes our awards and recognitions for tonight.
Great, thank you. So up first tonight on the agenda is student achievement and results presentations. And so we're going to hear from Nate Schultz and Tim Join about Passages this year, which were a little different. So I'll turn, I see Nate, I don't know if Tim is on the call, but I'll turn it over to Nate. Hi.
Nate, I'm here too.
Oh, you are here?
I am here. My house is going through some power surges right now, so I keep getting kicked off.
All right, well, Nate can be the pretty face for the presentation.
There we go.
I can, I can be the face only because I'm on my phone too. So I've had a little trouble tonight joining as well, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you are somehow able to see my face. Yeah, so, talking about passages a little bit, Mike Join, Principal of SIS, is also joining tonight, and I'm going to pass it to him a little bit too, to start by talking through kind of how they're different, and really to talk about what what we decided to do with our SIS 8th graders, because this was the first year that SIS 8th grader students were participating in Passages, and then we had to kind of make some changes along the way. But I'm going to have Mike kind of talk about what that is, and then I can give a little update in terms of 6th grade.
Yeah, so, I am coming from the SIS 8th grade celebration, so we just handed off 8th grade certificates to all our 8th graders, and our 8th grade class was back in 6th grade, the first 6th grade class to do Passages. So, it's both motivating and I think frustrating for them at times that they are the guinea pigs of the district as they go through, and are the trailblazing class for the passage projects. But their journey began back in 7th grade. We created what we were hoping would be a way for them to apply the learning that they experienced in class to a real-world project that was of interest to them. And so that process started in 7th grade with the capstone tour, which was an opportunity for them to meet with some local business people to present problems that were happening in the area, just to see if we could kind of catch a spark and get them thinking about solving real-world problems. After that, in their World Geo class, we typically end the year with a service learning project, and so we use that opportunity for students to make a proposal about something that they'd want to study further as part of their 8th grade capstone. When they came back in 8th grade, our original plan was to have them prototype solutions following the design thinking process that our Art and Project Lead the Way teachers had gone through in partnering with UWM. What we found out during that phase was that students were confused and frustrated after the summer, and being middle schoolers, their interests had changed from 7th to 8th grade. So they wanted the opportunity to be able to change what their project was. So, Mr. Schultz met with a small group of students. We kind of retooled the project on the fly, and the feedback we got from students was that they wanted to do this work within classroom setting. So we split up the project between 8th grade science, social studies, and language arts. In science, they were able to make a new proposal. Some of them stuck with their original proposals from 7th grade, others pivoted and picked something else. In social studies, they aligned it to their standards around civic engagement and created a call to action around the area that they had picked that interested them. And then in language arts, right before the school closures, they had just finished up an outline reflecting on their growth during this time and starting to produce their passage presentation. Then the school closure happened, and so we gave students the option of completing the passage online virtually with Mr. Schultz and myself. And so we were able to get to some examples of what the final passage looked like. But it was definitely a journey with many obstacles that the students had to address and overcome. But what we're hoping came out of it was that they did learn to apply, again, what they learned in the classroom to an independent project that interested them, and hopefully that's something that they can build on as they move on to SHS. That was my endpoint, Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I know, I had to unmute. So, we do have a couple example videos, and actually, Mike, I'm actually going to need you to pull up the Maya's example, because I'm not able to join the meeting on my computer for some reason. So, while Mike's pulling that up, we'll end with just a few minutes from an example passage from a 6th grade student that just completed that last week. She did that for us, so we'll end with that. So while Mike's pulling that up, I'll just talk really briefly about 6th grade, because this would have been the third year of 6th grade passages. And so, in talking with the 6th grade staff and thinking about where the 6th graders are at this point, we decided to do things a little differently as well, and to really provide a reflection opportunity for all 6th graders without making it be too much, to be honest. Our 8th graders have had more experience and wanted, you know, were able to, if they chose to, to record a video and had their passages outlined and pretty much ready to go, where our 6th graders were kind of just starting that reflection process. And so, we created just a few reflection questions, including just one example I pulled up here. Reflect on your academic growth. In what ways or subjects have you grown academically? Please choose a subject area, project, or skill you're proud of, and tell us why. So the teachers are working with all of our 6th graders to do a reflection on their growth academically, their character, and then as well as just thinking about themselves and who they are right now as a 6th grader and as a person. Teachers then are working with students to collect that information, and students have, will have a choice whether they do that in writing, they could make a video, they could audio record it, our 6th grade students are working on podcasts right now, so they may choose to do that. But whatever the students choose, we're going to take that information and then be able to share it with our SIS staff, so then they can have a little, get to know their students a little bit, and be able to participate, because usually we would have our SIS staff be on the 6th grade passages. So, we're doing a little bit differently this year, given circumstances, but still providing an opportunity for students to reflect, because we feel like that's valuable and important. So, that was just a little bit about what 6th grade is doing right now, actually. They're working on those reflections. So, I'm going to go back to Mike, who has the example from one of our 8th graders.
Okay, so, I'm assuming everybody can see my screen? Someone can give me an audible, yes?
Yes, Mike, that's good.
Okay, so this is Maya Shimko, and this is her 8th grade passage. Play the full thing, Mr. Schultz.
About five minutes.
Okay, all right, sounds good, here we go.
I'm an 8th grader at Shorewood Intermediate School. I went to school in Bayside at Stormont Elementary School for kindergarten through 2nd grade, and then I was at Lake Bluff. I've loved seeing how much we have all grown over the past two years. It can be very clear at times, although sometimes not so clear. I'm an avid reader, as well as a cyclist and a runner. I enjoy music and language. I play the viola, and I'm learning Spanish as well as Italian. I'm on the Shorewood Mountain Bike Team, and I'm one of seven girls on a team of about 55 members. I'm here to convince you to encourage girls and women you know to consider mountain biking and joining their local team. Girls are a minority in the sport, and we're fighting social and cultural norms, as well as media-filled stereotypes to reach equality. The past two years, especially this past spring, we have worked on capstone projects as a rite of passage toward high school. A capstone project is a project where students identify a need in the community and give a persuasive speech to convince the audience to take action. I'm interested in mountain biking, specifically girls and mountain biking, because female mountain bikers are a minority. Currently, girls are about 20% of the people mountain biking. Mostly, all I've done is research, but I have done some outreach and communication with other people, especially girls, suggesting that they try mountain biking, or to tell someone else to try it, and then join their local teams. And I'm working on creating a beginners camp, although that's been postponed because of COVID. This is what I'm here to talk about you today, too. I started mountain biking because of my mom, who's been a cyclist her whole life and is currently one of Shorewood Mountain Bike Team's head coaches and the Wisconsin NICA Grit Coordinator. When I started, I had a closed mindset, thinking if I have to go to these events, I guess I should do the sport instead of just sitting around being bored. However, I quickly fell in love with the sport, which is part of why I'm here today. I love the community of mountain biking in our team, as well as being outside and seeing the world from a totally different view, and the, and the challenge that it brings, climbing huge hills, going over jumps, and racing to the finish. The Shorewood Mountain Bike Team was started by some SHS students seven years ago who wanted to mountain bike and started a club with Mr. Van Dorn. Now we're a fully-fledged team and part of the Wisconsin League of NICA, or the National Inter-Scholastic Cycling Association. NICA started a program called Grit, or Girls Riding Together. Grit is NICA's initiative to increase female participation to 33% by 2023. 33% is around when groups start feeling not like a minority. According to NICA, girls currently represent around 20% of all student athlete participation. In 2014, researchers published a meta-analysis of existing studies on single-sex education. In all their research, they found no advantage for anyone in single-sex education over co-education. However, it is proven that co-ed games tend to bring out the best in everyone and have fewer complaints, hardly any trash talking, and very few fights compared to same-sex teams. In other words, it's beneficial to have girls in sports as well as boys. It helps everyone behave better, and it encourages more friendships. Finally, mountain biking is therapeutic, fun, and generally good for you. Therapist and counselor Joey Delawee takes all his patients outside, often mountain biking, for their sessions, and it has helped many of his patients. Conversations tend to flow easier, endorphins make you feel better, and it's a great way to reset and take a break from reality. Mountain biking helps to bring strong minds, bodies, characters, and communities, as well as confidence and self-esteem, and the best part is that anyone can do it. So what's your part in all of this? Your job is to consider mountain biking and joining the team, or tell people, girls and women specifically, about mountain biking, and encourage them to join their local team, or to find a local Grit or mountain biking event to participate in. My goal is to run an overnight summer camp for any beginning female riders, young or old, and to teach basic skills, as well as get on some trails, and help people realize that mountain biking doesn't have to be huge jumps, and it can be fun for everyone and anyone. Now, I would like to highlight some strengths I've gained over the past two years. The capstone process has taught me a lot, but especially empathy, patience, and understanding, as well as general research and presenting skills. As a pilot for capstones and passages, the teachers and staff are still figuring out how to do this and how it works. Therefore, we have to be patient as they do things more than once, or change what they're doing. And I've learned empathy and understanding as I watch them try, and sometimes struggle, to get us on the best, right path. These traits will help me in the future, because empathy, patience, and understanding are all very important soft skills or people skills, and researching and presenting skills are going to become more and more important as we move into an even more technological world. And with the career path I'm currently interested in, teaching, as teachers are presenting all day long during class. With that, I'd like to thank my teachers and school staff for their hard work to help us in listening to our feedback, and trying to create a project that we all enjoy. I would also like to thank them for all their hard work to switch our learning from in the classroom to online so smoothly and carefully. Thanks for listening and watching.
So, thank you, that's kind of what we had, just to give you an update on what 6th and 8th grade passages are for spring of 2020.
Can I ask a quick question? For whoever can answer, I'm just curious, I think Mike mentioned that there was definitely some learning in the fall about, you know, where 8th graders were in terms of what they were interested in. So how would, will passages maybe be different for the next year? And I guess that would probably include my data, so, I'm maybe doing some intel here.
Yeah, so what we learned from this class was that doing the work in the classroom and doing it within the same year rather than pulling it out over two years was more helpful for them, so I think we can build off of those natural connections that they made, specifically in language arts and social studies. Again, like tying this back to standards of civic engagement makes all the sense in the world. I'd like to take another swing of using Art and Project Lead the Way as a prototyping class, but a lot does depend on, like, where we're at as far as schooling goes. So something like prototyping would have to be done face-to-face. Things like civic engagement and doing research could certainly be done virtual, virtually. So, we do have a teacher team that's going to be talking, largely made up of 8th grade teachers over the summer about what the 8th grade capstone passage will look like. But what, what we'll say the same is we do want to connect what they're learning in the classroom to passion that they have, and give them some ownership and choice over what that, what the project is that they'll choose to work on.
Thanks.
Thanks, I had a quick question too, this might be for Nate. So, I know for the 6th graders, usually they were able to meet in, during the passage presentation with somebody from SIS? Like that was part of the piece of it, so, and I might need, maybe I should know this since I have somebody who's doing a passage right now, but what, like, what happens with that assignment this time?
So, the assignment is going to be shared. We're going to start with sharing it with the SIS Restorative Practices kind of group or committee. They're working on thinking about relationships. The entire SIS staff is, but we're going to start there, and it's really just going to be shared with teachers, so they begin to have, you know, the ability to start building relationships earlier on, and to see where those students, where their students have grown. And so unfortunately, logistically, being able to connect with, you know, a future teacher at this point just seemed a little too much for our 6th graders. And so, we're going to share the reflections, beginning with that team, and then working with that team to figure out, okay, what's the best way to get this to their teachers? You know, what teachers get the information, and go from there, yeah.
Okay, that's great. No, and I think, I mean, I guess from, you know, my perspective, I thought it went really smoothly. Quite honestly, like, given that I've seen it both ways now. And I thought, you know, like, I thought the, the students felt like they were still doing something really important in terms of a reflection for the end of their time in that building, so, I thought it went well.
Great, great. Thank you.
Other questions, Pablo?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for kind of trying to maintain some semblance of normalcy during these times, and being able to proceed with those passages, which are, you know, an expectation now. And I know the current 8th graders that were, you know, blazing the trails two years ago when they first did it, were probably looking forward to it. And I also want to thank Maya for her presentation. And for the record, I don't think that neither Clark nor I requested that Maya be the one presenting a topic that is near and dear to both our hearts. But Maya, if you're listening, thank you so much. Maya is also one of the captains of the mountain biking team, and a real amazing leader, so, yeah, very impressive all around.
Is Maya or Sydney on, do we know?
I don't think so. I texted Sydney to tell her that Maya, I sent her a picture, I don't think she's on, but, hey. I did let her know that we're very impressed, or that I was very impressed, but, yeah.
I did as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Hillary? No, okay. Well, thank you to Nate and Mr. Join, and Mr. Join for joining us tonight and sharing that with us. And look forward to, you know, hopefully seeing more of these next year in a different format, so.
Yeah, absolutely, you're welcome.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, so, up next is public comments number one. There's going to be three opportunities to make public comments. So now, you, everybody has been muted, so if you're interested in making a comment at this point, you would have to unmute yourself. And I think I can then see who's unmuted and call on you. I don't know, let's see, I can do this. I will say that we prob, we will have two more opportunities for public comments, probably closer, one closer to 8:15, and then another one maybe closer to 9 o'clock. So, if you'd like to wait, not seeing anybody unmute themselves at this point. Oh, wait, one person, wait, no? All right, I'm not going to be good at this.
Hold on, two people, there's
Oh, thank you.
That ends 585, and one that ends 189. Have unmuted themselves. We have three unmuted, so. Do you want me to, how about 85?
Yeah, your phone number ends in 585?
Yeah, and the others, if you could mute yourselves again, and then unmute yourselves in a moment when it's time for your speak.
All right, this is 8585.
Yeah.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Davis and other present, and others present on this call. My name is Jay Lowry, and I'm a Shorewood educator and Shorewood resident who is speaking on behalf of the 149 members of the SEA. Before I make my statement on behalf of the SEA, I just want to personally say how I have never been more proud to be a Shorewood teacher and a member of this community during these turbulent and challenging times. The activism of Shorewood students to combat inequity, racism, white supremacy, and police brutality has inspired me. Additionally, the support that they have received from our administration and school board should serve as a model for other districts in student activism. Silence is compliance, and the Shorewood School District community has been anything but silent. Now to the matter at hand. Last month, board members received dozens of personal messages from a diverse group of educators within the Shorewood School District. While I did not have the pleasure, as all of you did, all of you board members did, of reading each letter, I do know that there was a common thread connecting each of them, a budget that includes compensation for experience and educational attainment. Let me be clear, we're talking about the need for a budget that includes funding for steps and lanes. While attempts are often made in this district and others to muddle the negotiable CPIU cost of living increase with other forms of compensation, steps and lanes should always be separate from the CPIU. While we look forward to productive and mutually beneficial negotiations around the CPIU, we do not, under any circumstance, consider that conversation to be part of a budgetary discussion around the predictable, equitable, objective, and fair monetary acknowledgement of classroom experience and educational attainment. Rather than thinking of them as raises for teachers, they're a discount on experience and education. that are a vital element of attracting and retaining a high quality committed staff. Again, they are not raises. Steps and lanes demonstrate to our less veteran teachers that their time in the district and the educational schooling they seek are both valued and valued equally to their peers who have already completed their master's degree and have more than 10 years in the district. Many public and private comments have been made by the board and by Dr. Davis that would lead us to believe that all stakeholders share a similar philosophy. It is the hope of the 149 members of the SCA that the budgetary priorities of this district reflect this, even as we plan together for a potential shortfall. While we acknowledge the reality that cuts will be made, they should not be made on the backs of the district's frontline workers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, I'm going to call on the person whose phone number ends in or starts seven seven three and ends in one eight nine.
Hi, that's me. This is Julie Warky. I don't have as formal comments as Jay did. But what I wanted to say is I wanted to make a couple of comments about the work group that is being formed. So I felt like it was notable that, you know, 100 parents submitted applications to participate. And I feel like at this point, I hope that a couple of things are being considered. So one is that the board would seek out as consultants to the process, experts in the community. We have such a rich array of expertise in our community, and I feel like it definitely could be used in this process. The other thing is that, you know, for 100 parents to say, I'm going to give up my Thursday evening for, you know, however many number of weeks, people are really invested in what's going to be happening in this work group. So it feels like a great opportunity to, right now, to solicit questions and feedback, you know, what motivated people to participate? And, you know, and then not just have some generic form where people kind of write that information out that has some means for parents to indicate what is the big priority for them, like what is, what is something that they feel like needs to be addressed in this process? The other thing I have been thinking about is, you know, the transition back into school. And I feel like whatever processes are developed by the committee, that there needs to be a really step up. Not not that there was ever anything wrong with, but I feel like there needs to be a step up in terms of communication around processes. So for example, you know, drop off, things like that. And one of the institutions locally who is starting to reengage with, you know, visitors, they actually have posted videos of when you check in here, this is what this looks like. And I feel like it really is probably an important thing to think about, like, how can we communicate what the processes are to parents and families in new ways? So an email, will everyone read the email? I don't know. How closely will they read the email? Do parents need to sign off or even fill out a quiz showing that they understand, like, what are the criteria by which you keep your child at home? Is there a decision tree, a video, or like a form that parents can go to when their child has symptoms? Just like thinking a little bit bigger than maybe we've had to in the past in terms of communication around these issues. Those were just the things that came up while I was sitting here writing these notes. But just basically, I feel like obviously, there's a lot of interest in the community. There's obviously a lot of expertise in the community. And I feel like thinking ahead about how to capture that would be important.
Thanks, Julie. Can you remind me what your address is again?
Sure.
For forty minutes?
Sure, sure. Forty four fifty two Ardmore.
Great. Thank you.
And then Paro, may I ask a question just out of curiosity of Julie?
Sure.
It's just about what the example of the
Oh, which place is doing it?
Which place it is. Just to, so you've picked my curiosity. I'd like to see what kind of outreach they've done and others.
What's that?
The
Oh, the video?
You referenced that has like, this is how you check in. This is how you do, you know, those.
Yeah, River Edge Nature Center. So they had an event.
Oh.
And when they they marketed the event, they said, this is what it's going to look like when you check in to make sure everyone understood, you know, how do you move through this space in a way that's safe for everyone?
Thank you. I like that.
Thank you, Julie. Ends in six oh eight? Or ends in seven seven five?
This is seven 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 five. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Libby Dean. I'm at eighteen eighteen East Shorewood Boulevard. I'm also a fourth grade teacher at Lake Bluff, and I'm the SCA secretary. I wanted to share a bit about my story and what's led me to Shorewood. I began my teaching career in Shorewood six years ago as an instructional aide. When I graduated college, I was eager to have a classroom of my own. But when I heard there was an available instructional aide position at Lake Bluff, I jumped at the opportunity. I have been lucky enough to continue as a teacher in this district where I've taught fourth grade for the last five years, and I hope to continue for many more. I chose Shorewood for a multitude of reasons, including the strong emphasis on character education and philosophy of educating the whole child. I am proud to work in a district that has made a strong commitment commitment to equity. One of the reasons I was able to continue as a teacher in Shorewood is the salary schedule, which compensates teachers based on education and experience. I was drawn to the ability to look forward and see my salary growth. This allowed me to pursue a higher education and to purchase a home in Shorewood. About two years ago, I began to think seriously about pursuing my master's degree. One of the main factors that allowed me to further my education was knowing that I would be compensated by our salary schedule. In December of 2019, I graduated from the University of Wisconsin Milwaukee with my master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I am due to receive a lane advancement on the salary schedule for the next school year now that I have completed my degree. I front loaded the cost of this degree about $20,000, trusting and believing that the district would compensate me for the knowledge I acquired and would be imparting onto my students. It would not have been financially possible for me to pursue my degree if it weren't for our salary schedule. I am concerned and disappointed that two of the budget scenarios for next year do not include step and land advancements for teachers. As a district, our number four priority, as determined by the community, is attracting and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff. How will this remain a priority if the district does not compensate its staff based on knowledge and experience? I worry that many teachers will not be able to continue their education if they will not be compensated for pursuing advanced degrees. There are so many unknowns we are facing collectively. In these last few months, we have come together to support each other in brand new ways to find, share, and strive to best meet our students and their families' needs. If there is a shortfall financially, I expect that we will come together in the same way we did academically to discuss specific realities, discuss solutions, and implement them collaboratively moving forward. I have heard many board members state their support for steps and lanes. If this is truly something that you value and support, please include it in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Okay, I'm going to try for eight oh six one more time. Okay, well, we can come back to you at the next opportunity to make public comments. Thank you. All right. So up next is district operations, and we're going to hear a report from our owner's rep, Mike Huffman, who has sent a board report. Mike, do you have some things you'd like to highlight in that report?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I just want to give you a brief construction update because we can celebrate that we have entered the construction phase. So at the end of May, our moving services partner, C. Coakley, accomplished some moving out of Atwater, Atwater EEC, Lake Bluff. If you've been by there, you've seen their tractor trailer storage units in the parking lot. At Atwater, those will go away at the end of the summer because we'll move back in. But at Lake Bluff, those will stay for much of the year because they'll hold contents that aren't able to go back in until later in the construction process. C. Coakley is moving to the high school tomorrow. They'll start moving out of the library and in fact, virtually all of the second floor of the high school is that is what is slated to be remodeled this summer. So following the moving activities, our asbestos abatement contractors got in. We we solicited bids for asbestos abatement and wound up with two separate contractors. One is Integrity at Atwater, and the other is Dirty Ducks at Lake Bluff. And then Integrity will also be doing some work at the second floor of the high school after the moving activity there. So that asbestos abatement and lead abatement work is underway at Atwater and Lake Bluff. And Myron and some of their subcontractors, specifically Electrical, have gotten to work on some of the demolition activities where we aren't encapsulated for asbestos abatement. So very good to be underway, and that work is progressing on schedule. Some of the administrative things that have taken up our project team's time, we continue to progress going through all the steps necessary to be able to have a portable classroom that will reside in the asphalt play area between Lake Bluff and Lake Bluff EEC. That will provide two classrooms with two bathrooms and ADA accessible entry to house students there for the entire 2020-21 academic year. And then that will go away at some point next summer. So we have multiple steps that have to happen there. You can imagine it's a, it's a small building, and we've got to go through Village of Shorewood process to get that approved. And that's very much underway, and we hope to see that start to be delivered to site at the end of June. I'm happy to announce that we have a new partner in the process, and that is Creative Business Interiors. We sent out a request for proposal to, I believe, eight firms. We've got, we got six proposals, and we wound up interviewing three firms. And Creative Business Interiors, like the other two, are very capable furniture vendors. But we really felt strongly about the fit of the team that they had and how they could work very well with Epstein U and R architects. And and the Shorewood Selection Committee was very impressed with them. And we called them after the interviews, which were on a Friday, and said, you've got the job as long as you can show up on Monday and get to work because we've got furniture that's got to be in place by the end of August, certainly at Atwater in the new administration office area, and then also some at Lake Bluff as well. So they are very much underway, and they expect to release an order for that furniture on June 15. Another piece that we've been working on is, I can't recall if I've included a discussion on this previously, but as we submitted a for a permit for stormwater management at the high school related to the parking lot reconstruction, the DNR said, this is all good on the stormwater management front. However, your building is a historic building, and there is a process with the DNR to go through to be able to construct on the exterior of a historic building. So we reviewed a couple of consultants that could help us there. We wound up with TES Historic Consulting that has taken us through a process with the DNR. And they've concluded that process. And the DNR has said that we are okay to go ahead and construct on the the high school admin building so long as we do an extensive photo documentation of the building as it exists today. So so long as I get Dr. Davis to sign off on the proposal tomorrow, TES will show up tomorrow and accomplish that photo documentation process. We will then submit that to the Wisconsin Historical Society and and allow us to move forward with construction. So that was a kind of a late process twist, but I think we've worked through that that fairly well. There's there's some pictures in the report of the quite plain portable classroom, but also a little bit of the moving and construction activity that's that's underway. Really, probably the medias portion of my report here is I want to bring you up to speed on the most recent and last bid packages that Myron has had out on the street and has solicited bids for various scopes on. So they they bid out separately the high school, really the high school campus buildings, and then the intermediate school. So bids were received. They have now gone through a process of vetting those bids, making sure they're all qualified bids, making sure that they're complete bids. And I'm happy to report that we did did very well. In fact, against the Myron estimate on the high school, we did extremely well. So just for the scopes of work that were bid out, and I just caution that that doesn't include some of the things like general conditions, insurance and bond expense. But for the scopes of work that we bid out at the high school, the project estimate was 20 million oh thirty five. And bids we received totaled 15 million six thirty three. So that's a delta in our favor of $4,402,000. So that is a really, really good bid day. So good, in fact, that I would anticipate your question would be, well, where where were the big deltas between estimate and actual bids? So in anticipation of that question, I've flagged a few things in here. And and really, $2.7 million of the difference falls in three categories, and that is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. That's by by far the greatest bid. We did have also a $600,000 delta under in site utilities. And then it's a smattering of things throughout. A couple of other things I wanted to point out about the high school bid is one area where we got zero bids is on the replacement of the copper dome. That's a obviously an important feature of your historic building. And it's a difficult feature, and we didn't get anybody interested in bidding. So subsequent to bid day, we've reached out to a couple of different contractors and done more of a of a handholding process, actually walking them through the job, getting their input on what they feel is the right approach to replacing that copper roofing and what's not the right approach. And we think we're going to wind up with a good quality bid on there. So the numbers that I told you before just plugged in a placeholder to come to that that total. I think one of the other things I wanted to point out is in the elementary school bids, Myron, serving as your construction manager, got quite a bit of work serving as a subcontractor, so wearing both hats. And we had quite a bit of conversation about the one specific aspect, the general trades package. So in the high school project, it very much went a different way. Myron was only successful while they bid on five different scope of work packages. They were only successful in landing one of them. And that is a package that has a value of only $195,000. The general trade scope, which is by far the biggest package across all of our projects, actually went to a competitor, Moss Brothers. Myron was very competitive on it, but Moss Brothers wound up being $68,000 lower than them. And that is approximately a $3 million scope of work. So a big piece and went a different way than the elementary schools had gone. Another piece that Myron certainly was very focused on is the masonry construction. That's about a $600,000, well, actually, their estimate was about $900,000. And we got a very, we got a number of bids on that scope. And a Kinetator Masonry wound up being the low bid on that particular piece. So another swing from where we were with the elementary schools. Over at the intermediate school, we had a similar story, but it's just by comparison, the estimate for the work at the intermediate school is $5 million versus the $20 million of the high school campus. And there we experienced good bidding and wound up about, wound up $493,000 under that project estimate. So total cost of $4,709,000. The, I think the only thing I want to highlight there, well, again, our delta is in, biggest delta is in plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. And then finally, we do have a minority contractor that was successful there on our cast and place concrete work. That contractor is Platt Construction. I think I'll just conclude by saying with, as we turn the calendar to June and we entered into a construction phase, one of my employees, Carl Kramer, is now introduced to the site on a regular basis. He will be in district on Monday, every Monday and Tuesday. And then, of course, available to the project remotely as well. So I think we're feeling good about the project. There's a number of challenges that are still under pressure, but we're certainly, from a financial standpoint, in a good spot. And I think I'll stop at that and see if there's questions.
Great. Yeah, I'll open it up for questions. Pablo?
Thank you, Mike, for sharing such great news and thanks for all of your work. I appreciated you highlighting the Platt Management, that company, the minority owned business. I'm wondering, I know we had had lots of discussions as a board and we had talked about really wanting to make sure that minority owned businesses and women owned businesses had, were well represented, you know, in the final outcome. And I'm wondering, obviously, and you highlighted one example. Have there been others or how are we moving forward to ensure that that continues to be the case?
So after the elementary school bid bag, bids were received. We talked with Myron about what had been a directive to them expressed sometime in advance of that. They had an answer that said, you know, we put it out to, we put it out to everybody. Here's the kind of participation we had. We kind of refocused them with the next two bid packages and said, look, this has to be a very concerted effort and it has to be a documented effort. So they do have, and I don't have it for you tonight, but I will have it for you. They do have a much greater documentation of the efforts to introduce people into the bidding process. And in fact, we did have more participation in the bidding process. Unfortunately, we don't have more participation in the successful bidding process. While in the elementary schools, we did move towards a minority contractor that wasn't the low bidder. We didn't see that similar opportunity in the high school or intermediate school. But certainly, it's a good question and I think you wrote what the process was, a description of what the process was there. And we will be encouraging Myron to provide that documentation here shortly.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Emily?
Pablo, still my first question, so thanks for that. It looks like TES Historic, if I'm looking at the right company, is women owned, so.
Yes. That's not through Myron, that's a direct to the district contract, but yes.
That's good news. Anyway, I wanted to go back to the furniture. I just had a couple of quick things. I was wondering what, if you could remind us what the total furniture spend is expected to be or what that bid was for? And then on your slide, you had on slide number nine, like a little diagram that said something about healthy school approach. And just, I was hoping you could just briefly explain what that means and what that little diagram shows and why that was significant.
Yeah. First, let me start by saying that Creative Business Interiors is a woman owned business. So another one in that vein. You asked about the dollar value. So that's a good question. We're, I think we started out at $1.2 million. There was some adjustment to that. We've looked at that particular category and said, wow, if we've, if that had to get squeezed down earlier in the budgetary process, it's one that we might look to build back up through some of this cost savings in the bidding. So I can't tell you exactly where we think we're going to land on that. I think we would like to let it be an outgrowth of one of the tasks we've given to Creative Business Interiors, which is to help us with an inventory and a needs assessment. So I think that needs assessment will help guide us in where we think the right number is for furniture. I'm, I would just throw out a guess that we'll probably be back up into the $1.2 million. Dr. Davis, you think that's a fair assessment of the whole financial piece?
Yeah, I would think so. You know, it was an area that we've shaved back, you know, from a priority standpoint as we had been doing our assessment of the project. Yeah, like you said, we'll have to do that assessment, but I would think that's probably pretty fair.
Yeah.
And the focus of that is on the new, you know, on the new construction areas, renovated areas.
So I'm just looking for the diagram you referencing. But.
Slide nine, and then like below, it's the slide after the pictures of the little concrete pads where the portables are going.
Okay. So yeah, that is in reference to, we asked all of the interviewed firms to talk to us about the new environment that we're operating in. How does COVID-19 change the office environment and the educational environment? And what steps do they, as a firm, have some offerings in and some recent experience? And so they spoke to that and talked both about physical barriers, some graphics that they can offer by way of signage, wall, floor, et cetera, and just kind of walked us through some scenarios that they've, where they've been working with clients in social distancing and how the whole furniture environment can promote that.
Have you had, I don't know if you or Brian have talked at all yet about, like the selection of furniture needing to be different? Like, I'm just thinking like hard versus soft surfaces and smaller tables that can be separated rather than like big ones. Are we even at that point yet of like thinking through which particular items or?
Yeah, we started, I sat in on a meeting this morning. Our urgent focus is around the elementary school offices because those will be opening, opening to the public as we get started. So when looking at those spaces, yeah, there was conversation about, you know, what type of surfaces are going to be the easiest to clean? And not only for COVID-19, but just through a lot of the health issues that we have just naturally throughout the year, on a regular year. So that was definitely discussed. We've also talked about the, you know, what options that are available for, you know, really probably more of a temporary, you know, temporary barriers, if you will, between seats and between, you know, our staff and the public coming in. You know, similar to like you'd see in grocery stores and other places. So most, as we talk to our vendors, as we talk to our Creative Business Interiors, they're confident that we'll be able to get what we need. We certainly don't want those necessarily to be permanent because that might be something that we just have, you know, need for six months or maybe a year, but we want to be able to be flexible with that. As we would move into, so that's the selection process that we're, that's in progress right now. And then as we look at renovated areas, so the library and some of the classroom spaces that'll be coming up, yeah, I think certainly being able to look at things that can be multifunctional. So like, you know, tables, for example, that can, that can push together, but can also be, you know, separated apart and be functional will be important.
And what kind of input did staff have in terms of, or are they having in terms of like selecting? Which furniture?
Yeah. Yep. So today was a good example. So we had the principals and the secretaries from both Atwater and Lake Bluff in the room talking to our furniture vendor at this point. So essentially, the process is to be able to work with the architect to identify what the spaces are first. And then the, our furniture vendor then goes back and says, all right, this is typically what we would put in this type of space. And then they come back then to the staff group to be able to say, all right, so this is typically what we put. You guys know exactly how you want this area to function or will want this area to function. What do you think? You know, how do you move, you know, within this space? You know, knowing that it's, they need to be things that are also universally acceptable. So it's not just one person's, you know, pet desk that they fully need that that person may, you know, come and go or be in a different space. So there's been some direct, there's some direct input. Again, today was a good example of that that we'll continue to use as we're opening spaces with librarians and teaching staff.
Thanks. Last thing really quick. I was just curious if, also because of COVID, if our architects or anybody else in the project had talked about door hardware, like, and I'm wondering if we maybe are changing or have thought about changing our plans there just to minimize touch? And if that's even an option or that kind of hardware is available or that's come up yet?
Yeah, I think I can address that. Let me come back to the door hardware. But you know, you're in a unique position in that you, your school bishop went through this whole design process pre-COVID-19. And yet, we're building it during COVID-19. So how can our design and construction team be nimble and react to changing physical and needs of a changing physical environment? The best example is that we have looked at our bathroom fixtures. And while we had a specified manually operated faucet for sinks, we have gone to a touchless faucet in the elementary schools. And then, in fact, across all schools within the project. So that was a change that was made just last week. As you talk about door hardware, door hardware is tricky because it is very much a code driven feature. You know, for instance, a classroom that has a capacity of 20 people or so has one type of door hardware, whereas a classroom or space that has more than 50 people has to have a panic bar. So we are very much driven by that and the Americans with Disabilities Act for guidance on door hardware. As you look at something like touchless, there's a big jump if you were to go to automatic door operators. So we certainly have automatic door operators at entries into the facility. But we do not have them spread throughout the facility on the interior. That's a rather expensive piece. You can count on probably about $3,500 per door leaf to make it an automatic operator function. So we haven't looked at that, but we've fallen back on the code requirements for door hardware. I have another client, the Madison Youth Arts Center, also in the building phase right now. And there've been some discussions there that I think can carry forward to Shorewood. And it deals with how we handle the indoor air quality and recirculation of air and filtration of air. And I think as we engage our mechanical contractors here, we can have some discussions on exactly how that airflow is controlled. It could be a scenario where you come back to school in September and we have dramatically more outside air that's introduced into the building just because of the pandemic. And later, that gets programmed into a more economical mode where there is a greater combination of recirculated air and outside fresh air. So there's ways we can handle the control of air. There's also some things we can look at in increasing our filtration function on the air. And I think we'll be having those conversations.
Thank you so much. I'm relieved that you're having those conversations and thinking through those things already.
I'm going to turn over to Hillary.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up kind of on Emily's question. And Brian, since part of the work group is going to be looking at facilities and things, how much do you anticipate changes to, and I'm thinking more minor changes, you know, like the addition of hand washing stations in cafeterias? Or, you know, something along those lines being able to be made, given that we're kind of trying to catch a moving train here? So what amount of improvements or changes or suggestions do you anticipate being able to entertain from the work group this summer?
Yeah, I mean, probably the amount that we'll be able to, depending on what it is, a lot of what we're, what we've been talking about and starting to, starting to develop is just a budget around PPE, for example, or hand washing, you know, as you had mentioned, hand washing stations or hand sanitizers. So I'm looking at, can we get hand sanitizer, you know, push dispensers in every classroom, for example, so we're not dependent on, you know, just kids bringing in a bottle and the bottle locking up? Hand sanitizer stations, can we get something like that at every doorway? So as we, as kids are coming, you know, are going out to the playground or coming in from the playground without things like that. So that, those are some things that we're thinking of along with working through what the office entry space would look like to the public. Again, where you'd have the most common exchange with the community. So those are some things that we've thought about, you know, at this point. I would say, you know, we're certainly, you know, going to be as responsive as we can to the work group. Again, a lot of that's going to depend on, you know, what the item would be and availability. We do have money that would. We do have money that would be available through some of the CARES Act, the federal legislation. Money that was tagged for for COVID-19 improvements. So I think that's around $138,000 that we had received from that. So we've got, at this point, the estimate was about $50,000 in a conversation with Kelly Baylor, or Barlow, I should say, and Tony Sedida, just around like what we would need. And that's thinking about things like also masks for like the health rooms and and the clerical staff that would be working with sick kids and those types of things. But I would expect at least primarily, we, a lot of it's going to look like just, you know, more opportunities for kids to use the hand sanitizer and, you know, keep your hands clean, not breathing on each other. You know, just from a entry standpoint. So we'll have to, we'll have to really see kind of how that how that goes. But I think we would have the resources. My anticipation would be the pinch point might be ordering and actually like installing as the school year would go. So and whether or not that's available on September 1st. You know, there's likely going to be a lot of value in continuing those conversations and upgrading facilities, maybe as we get people in, as we learn some things. Because I think probably as vulnerable a window as September 1st is right now. I think when we're looking at flu season, you know, in current flu season from November through March or October through March, without a vaccine could also be, you know, times where we're just very vulnerable. So so we'll try, we'll do our best to be able to be responsive. But just because, I guess my point is just because we don't have it on September 1st doesn't mean it's not going to be available thing for us. And also thinking about the fact that, you know, we might not need a lot of, a lot of the infrastructure pieces as we would be moving forward beyond next year. And so not putting in permanent barriers where we don't want permanent barriers, but trying to get get improvements that would be solid, but still temporary.
Well, and I'm curious too, just thinking through like for schools in particular, this any supply chain issues? You know, if you have schools across the country that are trying to purchase some of these equipment or to keep that idea of being, you know, agile and nimble and, you know, not, I guess, not upending our buildings, but also being smart about the improvements that we're making. And just my my last question, Mike, when it comes to kind of the layers of government, I thought your DNR example was sort of interesting. And I'm wondering now with that under your belt, if you're anticipating any other government obstacles at various levels when it comes to our historic buildings? Or, you know, are there other things that we need to be aware of that could become a hiccup in that, in those kind of different layers of approvals and things?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there are, there's a potential for hiccups. You know, typically, a lot of the approval process comes at the tail end of the design phase. So, for instance, the state of Wisconsin approves plumbing drawings. But the local authority, having jurisdiction, approves the architectural. So, you know, we have to know who we're dealing with. The pool, the pool work is always a difficult one. There is literally one inspector for the state of Wisconsin for pools. And we have to be proactive about getting on that individual's schedule to follow up on the work we're doing with the pool. Any project has its unique characteristics with respect to local authorities having jurisdiction. So we know that we need to work with the village of Shorewood. There's a gentleman there that that I've been having some conversations with. We also know that we need to work with the Shorewood, is it Shorewood Capital Fire? Well, Shorewood Fire Department. And there's an individual there that is going to be very focused on the job. So we need to reach out to them early and often. Beyond those, I don't know of any, but you know, I guess we didn't know your building was a historic building, but not on the historic registry.
All right. But at least you're aware of those intricacies of one pool inspector and other other challenges to anticipate. So thank you for that.
Clark?
I just had a couple more questions, kind of disjointed from the previous discussions because you guys covered it all so well. Thank you. Regarding the TES Historical Consulting, how much, what's the financial impact of that? It's just a few, was it just a a few hours of time that they're going to be spend in reporting on this? Or is that something of note from an expense standpoint?
So there there are two phases to to her work. That that first phase has been accomplished. So that was to take us through the whole process of evaluating it and to see what what would have to be done. I frankly can't remember exactly what her fee was, but I want to say it was in the $3,000 to $4,000 range. The second phase for which she is doing the extensive photo documentation, pulling that together into a portfolio that's reviewed by the Wisconsin Historical Society. Her fee is $3,472.
Okay, okay, great. I just was asking because I know it wasn't something that you were expecting. Just like we got some good news on all the the great bidding work that that was done, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something significant. I didn't expect it would be. I do want to follow up, actually. It's kind of a tangential question. With all the construction, Brian, I know that a lot of our areas are going to be closed off and not accessible at certain times during the construction. But do we have a plan yet on one post-June 30, I guess, when we can start using some of our our, I guess, areas? Because and the reason I'm asking this is because I know this is kind of tangential, but it's related to the construction in the sense that I know that things like the farmer's market is asking for help to find a location to have. And I know that they were reached out to the district, but I wasn't even sure if that was a possibility. Can you opine on that or give us a little bit of background on that?
Yeah, so so we're certainly hopeful that we can open, open all of our campuses up on July 1st. I think what we'll need to do is, and this has begun, but we'll need to just put a communication together. Is just talk through, you know, I think in periods of time. So thinking about July and August. You know, what areas, one, what areas are going to be under renovation? So those areas certainly are going to be areas we need to stay out of. We also have to look at, you know, the traffic of the trucks and, and, you know, waste management and that type of thing to make sure that those spaces are not accessible. So we've talked to Myron to talk about fencing, specifically in areas that that we just don't want kids around, knowing that in our demographic, you know, we've got people walking through our spaces all the time to make sure that it's really clear, really clear on where you can and can't go. And so between the fencing pieces and just getting communications out to the community, that's what will, that's the plan at this point. Jay Coleman, who's our site superintendent from Myron, also is going around at the elementary schools right now. And just giving his contact information, introducing himself, and then, you know, just talking a little bit with neighbors, going door to door across the neighborhoods in that in that specific area. So they have an idea of what's going on. So so Jay would be the primary contact point. You know, for for neighbors, so they could contact him directly if there was a concern. Certainly, they can always contact me. You know, and we can circle back around to it. But but we'll have some like specific areas, trying to keep playgrounds open as much as possible. It's probably a matter of some parking, you know, that'll be a little bit different. And then, you know, we'll work, work with the village on that.
Okay. I don't have anything else for?
Thanks. I had to ask Brian about the the budget updates. So if I do my math correctly, we're around $7 million under budget currently from all four bids, for all four buildings.
Right. And I think, you know, just with, as Mike had mentioned, I think the Copperdome is something that still needs to be tightened up. Is that right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I mean, I expect there to be additional. I mean, I definitely expect there to be additional things that come up, but I would, when can the board expect to get an updated full budget for the project?
So we have been presented with a guaranteed maximum price for the elementary schools. We haven't signed off on that yet. We, I would expect that we're two to three weeks away from having a similar GMP for intermediate and high schools. That's really the point at which we're able to input that, those dollars. We convert our architectural fee from a estimate based on percentage of, or a cost based on a percentage of an estimate to actually a flat fee based on the actual bids we've got. So that that's a piece of the puzzle that gets solved. Then the FFNE is the next big one. After that, they start to drop off. And I think that by the time we get to your next board meeting, I would feel like we'd be in a very very good position to of confidence on the numbers.
Great, thank you. Pablo, did you have one more question?
Two more. One is just regarding the temporary classrooms that are going to be set up. How do those fare in winter weather is one part. And the second, I suspect we're going to have to have I suspect one of the possibilities in going back to school would be, you know, staggered groups. But if not, how many students would fit in light of needing to maintain distance?
So the classrooms are going to be used for EEC students, and therefore we are, we're limited by the state of Wisconsin licensing requirements on the number of students. So at 650 square feet per classroom, we have to have 35 square feet per student, and that results in 18 students in the two classrooms. So that that is our maximum occupancy per licensing. That's a pretty generous amount of space as compared to a, say, a third grade classroom. So already you have limits there, but you also have kids that probably don't sit still very often, right? So I don't know if I can go beyond that. I mean, that's I'll answer your question on how it fare in the winter. And the answer is mediocre from an energy performance standpoint. You know, this is, this is a trailer, and it's going to have not real thick, not real heavily insulated walls. However, from a comfort standpoint, I think they'll function quite well. They, you know, unlike the school environment where you have an air handler that might serve eight different classrooms, you now have a heating and cooling unit that is just specific to those two classrooms. So your adjustability is just right there in those two classrooms, and it will, it will perform quite well. I think comfort level will be good. I think energy efficiency will be mediocre.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question has a very different type of question. It has to do, also dealing to some extent in this new reality, this new world we live in, about the kind of door handles that are hygienic. There is new models of hygienic door handles. This is fairly new in the market. I don't know what door handles cost. I'm looking online here to see about these. I saw this, a report on TMJ4 about these push-pull style hygienic door handles where one, you know, can kind of pull the door open. And then kind of like if you've ever been at the O'Hare Airport on the toilet seat, sometimes they have plastic that after one person uses it, it filters around. So then the next person gets fresh for the plastic, same concept here with these door handles. We're dealing with a very new reality. And I just wondering if that had come up or but they're called like pearly, push-pull, hygienic door handles.
Yeah, just just for your future cocktail conversation, that toilet at the O'Hare Airport is called the Bago Toilet. And I met the mother-son team that invented it. So that. I'm not familiar with the the door handles that you're talking about. We can certainly take a look at that. Especially if you had a name that we could could research. I can tell you that door hardware is extremely complex because we ask door hardware to perform a variety of functions. We look at it differently for a storeroom type environment. We look at it as a classrooms environment. We look at it as a classroom secure lock. We look at it as actually four different types of classroom secure lock. So there's a lot of things pulling at at door hardware. There's also commercial grades, and we are at a school environment, we are at the highest commercial grade of the lock for longevity and also force to deter forcible entry. So there are a lot of, lot of factors that play into door hardware, and it is an expensive piece of everything we do here. But having said that, there's always a better widget and be happy to take a look at it.
Thank you, Mike. I will I will send something to Brian if he can send to you.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Mike. So we'll see you again in July, correct?
Yes.
At the first meeting. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Mike.
Up next is a COVID update, and we're going to have a couple of presentations. So the first is from Roxanne Tibbetts on the steps that have been taken to support multilingual learners.
Hi, thank you so much. I understand that some people on the board or all of the board members requested hearing about how we supported our multilingual learners. I'm sorry, can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So I thank you very much for being interested in our multilingual learner program and how we were supporting. So thank you so much for your interest and for inviting me to present. Our team is super proud of our efforts. And we're really appreciative that you were interested in hearing about this and inviting me to present tonight. So thank you. So I want to start after that thank you with a quote from Maya Angelou to just tie everything together. Do the best you can until you know better. And then when you know better, do better. We provided, and I believe you have the document that I put together, our team put together, contributed to. We provided many direct supports. We translated many documents. We often, we translate always. What looked different was we needed to translate for our students curriculum where when they're with us, we're with them, brick and mortar, they're translating on iPads. So we translated curriculum plans, curriculum documents, what was being sent home on a weekly basis. We were translating sometimes letters that Brian was sending home. And then we were posting that. I was posting that on our Shorewoods School District multilingual learner family webpage, and I provided that link there for you. So if you've never had a chance to go on that webpage, this would be, not right this minute, but I mean, if you had a chance to go on it. And then you'll see there's a little more to the page than just the family webpage, and you'll see some other things that I put on there specifically during the COVID time. That was important. We also translated the lunch information for our families. And in addition to just translating, we also, in working with our families and our parents as education, as education partners, we made sure they had this information. So we were meeting with we made sure they had this information. So we were meeting with them, we were talking with them, we were messaging them. We wanted to make sure they had all the information, of course, that everybody else had. We, so another thing, we were like, in school, pick up and drop off those packets and the technology, the device pickup, we wanted to make sure our families had that information as well that went home in English. So we had meetings with them regarding that. We were sending messages to them. We sometimes were bringing that, things to them ourselves, so we would make sure they had things. Some of our parents attended meetings with their children, which was wonderful to have them so involved, again, because they were right in the front lines and they were at home teaching. Our ML teachers were our, were the, acted as liaisons between the classroom teachers and the parents, between the classroom teachers and the students. And I know I'm talking super fast, I'm sorry. So if you need me to pause, and if you want to ask questions now or wait until the end, I'm sorry. We, weekly meetings, one-on-one with our students, and sometimes those weekly, depending on the students' linguistic needs and academic needs, we, those meetings were either once, anywhere from once a week to three times a week. And again, sometimes the parents attended those meetings. Like I had a student who always dad sat in on the meeting, and today mom and dad came to the meeting. Mom had questions, dad always attended the meeting. The first thing we always did in those meetings, we always checked on the students' social and emotional health. And sometimes that took five minutes, sometimes that took 20 minutes of the 30-minute meeting. So, and sometimes a minute, the meetings were scheduled for 30 minutes, and if they needed to last 45 minutes, if they needed to last 60 minutes, that's what the student needed, that's what we did. So, and then moving, when we were able to, if we were able to move on from just checking in and chatting with them, we worked on reading, of course conversing in English, so they were listening and speaking English. I'm sorry, did you have a question, Clark? Were you just raising your hand? Okay, no, I'm sorry. Reading, supporting, we supported their classroom learning. So for our students who were had the technology skills and were able to share screens with us, they were able to show us, for example, a writing assignment, and then we worked on the assignment together in real time, so that was really awesome. It was really helpful for them. We also worked on sixth-grade passages together. I just worked on that assignment today with one of my sixth graders, so that was another thing we did. We usually utilized various, various platforms, and I just listed those there for you. I can talk more about them if you want me to, or if you have questions about those. Some of those we used during the school year anyway, and some of those were new to virtual learning. Our ML teachers, and I should say too, sorry, going back to the one-on-one meetings, it was our, both our ML teachers and our multilingual learner instructional aides. So the, our aides worked with us in setting up those meetings and conducting those meetings. And then likewise, our ML teachers and our instructional aides held office hours daily. So we let our students know, you know, if you're working on an assignment and you have a question, reach out to us anytime. We showed them how to use Google Hangout. We gave out our cell phone numbers. Some of our kids were more comfortable using like WeChat or WhatsApp, and so they would reach out to us, yeah. And they would message us, they would send us a picture of an assignment they were working on, and they would have it circled, what part they needed help on, and yeah, they're awesome. I love how they know how to use technology so much better than I do. We had family calls where we used interpreters during the calls when needed. We had outside of curriculum, another way that we supported, if you are familiar with the restaurant Lucky Lou. Lucky Lou is owned by a Shorewood family, the Lou family, and the Lou family has four children, and then their sister works at the restaurant, and they have five children, so nine children in total that either have graduated from Shorewood or still attend Shorewood. And Lucky Lou had to close down for a while due to racial profiling. They're a Chinese family. I know, it's horrible, and I'll try to get through the story without crying. So when I learned about the situation, I reached out to as many teachers as I knew that knew the Lou family and the sister's family, and we just inundated the two families with emails of support and, you know, what can we do for you? And they were just overwhelmed with gratitude, and then when the, sorry, when the restaurant was able to reopen, then we inundated the restaurant with our business. So if you like Chinese food, Lucky Lou is really great food. If you've never had it before, it's actually Chinese and Japanese food. So Lucky Lou, great restaurant. Then they will deliver, and it's a Shorewood student who will deliver your food. Well, possibly, if he's working that night. So now I lost my spot because that's such a touching story, but, okay, so we translated. So those of you that have kids in the district, you probably received a survey from principals, right? So that survey went out in English, and it was different, slightly different for each school, right? So I took that survey and I had it translated into our top languages, and then I sent it out to our multilingual learner families. And then when it came back, instead of sending it to the translation company and having all those answers translated, and then that would be an exorbitant fee and more wait time than I just translated. I, well, some of them were easy to figure out because it was like multiple choice, so that was easy. And then I translated it on my own with Google Translate. It worked pretty well, actually. And then from that, though, we learned we had missed an Atwater family, but that it was rectified, that still needed a computer. And we also learned that we had really grateful families, of course, that we, we already knew this, but it was really nice to read their comments, and they were just really thankful. And the messages of gratitude from both parents and students, we had a couple of students who took the survey, and then otherwise predominantly parents. Thank you, and please keep up what you're doing. Please keep supporting our students. Please keep meeting with the ML staff. Please keep meeting with our kids. Okay, so some more direct supports. We, for those of you who have had your kids go through Lake Bluff, and they started in kindergarten, you know, they have that informational meeting towards the end of the school year, so you know about the MAC. And so that meeting, of course, needed to be virtual this year, and so our multilingual learner teacher at Lake Bluff attended that virtual meeting, Jennifer Cingliaro, and she attended it with a translator and with the ML family that needed to, that wanted to attend it. So that was another support. So we did, you know, lots of things, you know, throughout like that. Free meal information I talked about already, I believe. We also made sure we, our students were ready and to participate in those online crew meetings and attended those crew meetings when we were able to. Typically, in the spring, the access scores are sent out, and I think some of you have probably heard me present about access scores before. So some of you have not, though. So do you want me to talk a little bit about what access scores are? Yes, okay, Emily said yes. Okay, so the access test is a test that our multilingual students take yearly, and it's done like nationwide. There are 40 consortium states, so many students take this. So it measures that their English development in four areas. So listening, reading, speaking, and writing. And then from that, we get a new, what's called a composite score, that what we call like their English, their English proficiency level. So they move in levels from one through six, so one would be very early English, some like words and phrases, and then six would be they're proficient, they're on level, and they're speaking English, reading, writing, listening at a level that would be commensurate with kids who have always spoken, and, and it's academic. It's social and academic, but definitely an emphasis, emphasis, excuse me, on academic English. So those, we take, the students take the test in December and January in Wisconsin, and then the results come out end of May, or, or sorry, end of April, early May. And because of us being in those virtual learning time, they, WIDA chose not to mail home the score, or mail the scores to the school district right now because there's nobody at the high school to receive those scores, right? So we, we receive those online, so we have the scores. So we have the ability then to email those scores, and we have them, the WIDA provides those to us translated as well. So we, in 42 languages, I don't think I'm misspeaking, I'm pretty sure it's 42 languages. So it's really fabulous. We don't have to send that out to a translator. It's provided for us because we belong to the consortium. So we took that on as the ML staff to do that, where typically an administrative assistant does that. So we thought it was really important that our parents and our students expect that in late spring, and we're looking forward to knowing what their improvement was. And so we went ahead and did that, and the parents were really appreciative, like right away when I sent them out to my students and parents, right away, oh, thank you, Ms., thank you. So that was really nice. Okay, so does that, did I explain it well enough? Let, that, that pretty much makes sense, okay. So some indirect supports that we provide, of course, is advocacy for our families always. And then can, so typically during regular, when we're in brick and mortar, I keep saying, times, we conduct quarterly ML staff meetings, and we decided that we needed to increase that. We needed to support each other. We needed to check in. We needed to make sure our families were fully supported, and so we increased that to weekly. And instead of just having the ML teachers there, we also invited our instructional aides and Tim Joint attended the meetings as well. So, so that was, that, and that was extremely helpful, extremely beneficial. So that was, that was a really good change. We also attended co, co-planning meetings with our classroom teachers, and that's something that we do during brick and mortar times too, but sometimes, you know, that just needed to like increase, and I think number of emails increased in text messages to each other, of course, right? We're not running into each other in the hallways and saying, hey, what reading lesson are we doing today, and what are we writing today? So we continued, of course, to scaffold assignments for our students. We were part of every, so like I support fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, in addition to being the coordinator for the program. So I was a part of every Google classroom where I have ML students. And so then I can just go on there, see what the assignments are, see if my students have turned in their work or not, so, and then I can also help score assignments. So I have been, like, I scored an assignment today, so that's been helpful. We also, we have been delving into best practice teaching for virtual learning for our ML students. And so that looked like reading articles, sharing resources that we found, looking at websites for our families, looking at websites for our students, staying abreast of what is DPI saying for our ML students and our ML families? What is WIDA saying? What is TSL saying? And then I recently, like, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, I attended a professional learning seminar, virtual. And it was supporting English learners during distance learning, which leads me to, we can do better, our growths. So what we've learned from all the direct supports, indirect supports we've provided, and then from the professional learning seminar that I attended, we, we need to translate more. We need to translate more of the documents that we're sending home, and it's going to be challenging, and it will cost us more, but it's imperative. We, we are expect, we are not only are expecting, but it is a fact, our parents are now the teachers. There are, if, okay, I should preface that by saying, if we go into a virtual learning, again, we need to translate more of our documents. So robo calls, infinite campus class that go out, emails, letters from the top down, so classroom, from classroom teachers, from principals, from admin. So we, we just have to do better. One idea that I was presented with at the professional learning in service that I attended was there, there were districts that set up a virtual call center, and where we definitely had interpreters available, and some did volunteer their time. I don't know if any of you know Anne Leplay from the Alliance de France. I don't know how well I did pronouncing it. So Anne helped countless, countless hours with a French family from Lake Bluff, and all her time was voluntary. So she did not charge our district anything. She was amazing. So our other people, our other interpreters that we utilized were either from a service like Accutrans or I forgot the name of the company downtown, sorry, it just flew right out of my brain. They provide us a Vietnamese interpreter translator. And then we also have another company we utilize, Accutrans, that we send in documents. So we, in essence, had a virtual, a virtual call center, but if we go into a virtual learning situation again, I would like it to be more intentional, and, and where it's communicated to the parents, where we have a list of interpreters, like here's who you can call if you're an Arabic speaker. Here's who you call, so not that it's, it just was less formalized this time. Is what I'm trying to say in my long-winded way, sorry. Some other ideas that I saw presented, and what I learned from working with some of my students were that we need to print out packets, and I don't mean like blanket for all our students, but for kids who need it. We had, I had some students who would go to work on an assignment, and they just, their, whatever, like the computer they were working on, they weren't able to type in whatever the cells were. And then they would email the teacher, and the teacher would say, well, just print it out, and they're like, you know, they're working with 80 kids, so they're just like, right, giving out the quick answer. And so then the, the student would reach out to me, and I would try to troubleshoot, and it just, it wasn't working for them. So if we could hand out packets or printers or whatever it is that would work for them. So, and also if we could limit the number, and I don't know how this will work, because from what I saw, because I saw many, right, classroom plans that went out, but for our ML students and our ML families, there were so many links that they had to keep track of, and the kids, and the passwords, right, and the sign-ins and the logins, and it was so overwhelming for some families that just don't have those technology skills. So if we could in any way try to limit that, and then for the platforms that we do use and the technology resources, if we could take a really hard look at them and ensure that as many as possible have embedded supports. And what I mean by that, if they had supports like translation already in them, and if they don't have translation, then do they have, are they graphic rich? Do they have videos? Do, do they have the potential of, so for example, on Newzella, you can change the reading level. So it can, it can be a little, like you can basically like simplify it, right? So things such as that. That's finally the end. So are there any questions?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I ask about the, what we, you men, you mentioned the translation services, and I guess Can I ask about the, what we, you mentioned, you mentioned the translation services and I guess It sounds like your recommendation, if we were to go to a virtual Go back to another virtual setting is to have more translation options, both written and this kind of call. Do you feel like, I mean, given like what you guys have learned over these last few months? Like, are there ways in which we can, as a district, be reaching our multilingual Learning families more with translation, even if we are face to face? Are there things that we're, we've been missing in terms of not having the adequate number of trans, of translation?
Oh, so even if we go face to face?
Yeah, or is it something that really is a virtual learning issue?
It's both. We could do better even if we're not face to face. Like, one thing I know as far as like ML documents. In the last like five years. I have made a concerted effort that every ML document be available in top languages. And I used to only look at that as our top five languages. And then my ML team kind of gave me some pushback, which is helpful because when we know better, we do better. So So I started also looking at that, not just as district-wide top languages, but so at Atwater, Turkish is a top language. Turkish is not a top language district-wide, but it's a high language need at Atwater. French is not a top language anywhere in our district, but we have a French-speaking family That it, they need documents translated for a number of reasons, which I could go into all the reasons. Or it's a couple of big reasons, but So Jennifer wisely and kindly pushed back with me this year and she said, We have to translate for this family. So we've have translated for this family. And so now, the reason I'm saying all that is because I have, we have now all, every ML document, and if you go, if, not if, when you have a chance. And you go on the Shored School District ML webpage and you click on the, the ML handbook. And you go into the appendix, I know that's a lot of steps, sorry. But you'll see now, every ML document is available in I should know this number, but it's been so recent that I was able to get this done. It's available in like eight languages now, not just our top four and five. So it was a concerted effort and thanks to the efforts of Tim and I in like hunting and scrounging budgetary-wise, we did it this summer when there was big, when there was thirty percent off. Sale that
Translation?
I didn't know there's a thing that had sales, that's
Yeah, I know, that's interesting.
During virtual learning time, so I found that that sale came across my desk and I'm like, yes, okay. So, but yeah, so that was one area. It's like there are other areas that we, we can do better. So like Jennifer Caniglario sends out a monthly newsletter through Samores. And Samores, if you update and you pay, I don't know how much more money, sorry, we'll have to ask Jennifer. You can have the embedded translation in it. And I know other principals use Samores, but You know, they don't pay the extra money or the, or maybe it's the district, I'm not sure, sorry. But if we all were able to do that, then it would already be available for our parents then, right? That'd be great.
Thank you.
And then like report cards, that's been another thing. Tim and I have been trying to figure out, how can we ensure that report cards? Because that's one of the top documents Office of Civil Rights says we should be translating. And Infinite Campus just has not been possible yet.
Great, thank you. Hillary?
Yeah, no, I think you kind of took my question, but it does make me sad to think that, you know, all of the Emails, you know, coming from, from Brian or from principals or, you know, with, with really pertinent information to families That they, some families might not be getting them or understanding them or able to read them. So I think in some ways, as you said, regardless of if we're virtual or brick and mortar, That that's definitely an area to, to grow and to, to look at. And I understand that there's, you know, obviously a cost associated with it. But that's kind of heartbreaking to think that we have families in the district that aren't getting those, you know, able to communicate In that way or to get those communications. So I really appreciate in some ways the opportunity that we've had to kind of look at some of these things And perhaps have those growths and, you know, those, those betterments. No matter what, no matter what we do in the fall or no matter how school looks. So thank you to you and your team for, for all that hard work and To all the families for, for sticking it, you know, sticking through it and, and working with you guys.
Thanks. Yeah, Emily?
I just one really basic question. First echo huge thank yous that it's, sounds like an incredible amount of work and I, I'm just really grateful for your work on behalf of our students. Thank you. I just wondered about how many students that is, how many ML students there are right now and then the size of the ML team.
Okay, so our ML students currently were at about one-twenty, which is down From pre-number forty-five, when we had over two-hundred.
Wow.
Uh huh, yes, that's the truth of that. So sorry, I had to get political there for a minute. But I'm off the clock right now. Inside brick and mortar walls, so right, Brian? So, and it really is the truth. So So yeah, we are, yeah, slashed our numbers in half.
About one-twenty, you said?
Yeah, approximately one-twenty.
Okay.
And then our ML staff, we have Four and a half, but really I'm half of a teacher because I'm a half of a coordinator. So really four teachers and then aides, gosh, I haven't counted them in a while, sorry. Five part-time instructional aides. Four at Atwater, one at Lake Bluff. And then, yeah.
It's quite a ratio, so thank you again so much for all that work.
Thank you.
Pablo?
I just wanted to add my thanks, Roxanne. Thanks for everything you do. I really loved your presentation. I believe it was last year at the Authentic Learning Showcase. And we're all missing out on this year because of pandemic. But thanks for pushing us to be better. I appreciate your reflections on, you know, your crows. I think you're, you're fantastic. And this is some, you know, invitation to us to thank is we do send out a lot of information from the board. And you were very kind in letting us off the hook and you just mentioned, you know, messages from schools and principals and teachers. But I think we're on the hook too for, for doing a better job. So thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you. Thank you again so much. I really honestly appreciate that you were asking about this. You wanted to know. We've been really, really proud of our efforts, our students, our families. It's been honestly so amazing to be invited into their homes. So and now to be invited into your homes. Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Good night.
Good night. The second piece of the COVID update was around the reopening work group. Brian provided a lot of summary materials for that. So is there anything you want to add to the materials that you included, Brian? Or can we ask you questions?
No, yeah, you just, yeah, if there's any questions, I'll take them.
So I wanted to follow up on the question that was asked during the public comment. Because I also, I remember we had talked, you had talked about having experts Around health in particular included in the work group. So can you speak a little bit to that piece?
Yeah, so I've been doing some outreach with, with some community experts. Some of who, you know, I was aware of prior to this work group and some who had reached out. So adding a couple of community members that might not necessarily have, that are necessarily parents of students, but Would have some expertise through some of their professional experiences. So reaching out to them to see if they're, they're available, so we'll add them to the list because I think that is important as we're, as we're moving forward.
Okay, so, so, and so they will be in the group starting on Thursday?
Yeah, yeah, hopefully we can get in touch with them and they're, they're available. If not, starting, hopefully starting the following week. So be able to provide that perspective.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask about like the two facilitators and about, so how I see that you and Tim are the facilitators for teaching and I think teaching and learning as it's called. And then Alec Fraser and Joe. So I'm just curious about your, like how you made that decision?
Yeah, so, so one, Alec Fraser, being an alum, so a board member for the American Healthy Schools Association. Brings a lot of resources to the group and some community experience. So, so I had reached out to Alec, interested in co-facilitating kind of the larger group with me. And he had agreed to that. We've met a couple of times. And then we'll start in a large group, spend about fifteen minutes maybe debriefing And then move into subgroups, as you had mentioned, teaching and learning and then the facilities, health and safety. And so Joe Paddock, being our safety coordinator, is going to work with Alec on the facilities, health and safety side and co-facilitate that. Co-facilitate that, he will. And then Tim Joint and I will, will co-facilitate the curriculum instruction, teaching and learning Side of that, obviously with him being our curriculum instruction director, but that made the most sense.
And then my last question is about just kind of communication out. So, you know, as Julie mentioned, and I think is, you know, I think it's really fantastic that a hundred parents are interested in You know, supporting these efforts. But ways in which we're gonna, I guess, think, I guess, can you talk, speak a little bit about how, what happens in those meetings will then be communicated back out? And then what the opportunities for feedback or questions or comments are on that?
Yeah, so, yeah, I thought that was a really great point. So what, as we have a structure now and again, this can evolve as we, as we move forward. Is that we'll have both Kelly Baylor and then Iris Bohan taking, taking minutes for each subgroup. So we'll have an agenda for the entire group and then each subgroup will have their own areas that they're working on. So we'll be getting together, so that, that team meets on Thursday night. On Friday morning as well, I'll be getting together with Kelly and Iris to put together Minutes for the meeting that has just happened before and then begin putting together the agenda and topic that we're going to be covering the next week. And then I expect to be able to get that out to the community then on Friday afternoon. And so what that'll provide is an opportunity for people that can't, that either weren't in the meetings or can't make the meeting. But want to be able to, information is to be able to not only look at the minutes, but also look at some topics that are coming up. And then if any, a reason they'd want to share to be part of, part of the discussion. And those things that can be emailed to myself or Kelly Baylor to be able to funnel to the facilitators. As we go week to week. And so I expect that to be just a regular rhythm. You know, the, the idea to be able to survey people and see if there's other resources too. Those are, as was mentioned, public comments, those are, you know, I think a tool that we look at moving forward.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, Clark, go ahead.
Nope, nope, Emily can go, go ahead, I'll wait.
That made me forget my question for a second. More a suggestion, I just wondered if it'd be possible to maybe Direct people really specifically to where the minutes will be shared. Or, you know, do, ask Caitlin to maybe think of ways to do a broad proactive You know, blast for at least the first meeting so that then people know if we're going to be more like Let it be more passive from there on out, like just an initial kind of here's where to get this information going forward. And, and then a question, I guess you had said minutes for people who can't make the meetings. So just to clarify this, it's not an, it's not a meeting that anybody can join, right? It's, you have to be
Correct.
Part of the group, okay, just checking.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct. So, yeah, and we can, we can definitely make it, you know, for sure for the first meetings. But I'm not, I don't see a reason why we couldn't, I just make it kind of a regular, you know, community, community conversation. It certainly is on top of, you know, everybody's minds, I think, as moving in the summer and thinking about raising consumer confidence, if you will. And I've been able to re-engage, which is, which is our goal as we're moving forward. So, so I'm sure I can work with Caitlin and get a repository for the minutes so people can, you know, if you pick up on it in July and want to recap. You'd have an opportunity to do that, but then also, you know, do some proactive outreach as we're, as we're moving forward.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Clark.
I just wanted a little clarification on the, the summary you said you'll be working on from the premise that we all return to face to face, which is Great, but they'll also be working on other scenarios as well. That's part of the, that's part of the mission of working group, right? I mean
That, yeah, that's correct. And that, that's going to be a majority of our work is, is working through multiple scenarios. The reason why, well, a couple of reasons why, you know, thinking about it from our And if, if, do that in a safe environment, you know, we think that's the most effective way for us to, to conduct teaching and learning.
Agreed.
And I mean, that's the way that we were trained and our facilities were set up, that type of thing. But we know that in this environment that that may not be possible. So what the work group will be working through is just multiple scenarios. For not only the beginning of school, so we call it the reopening work, school work group, just to think through what September first would look like. But I, I think it's really important to remember that the scenarios are likely going to be in play, you know, for probably all next school year. You know, until we get a vaccine and just get a more stable, stable environment. So it's very possible that we can, you know, be face to face at the beginning of the year, get September and October in. You know, get to around Thanksgiving virus spikes or do, you know, in conjunction with flu season. And we would need to, you know, shut things down potentially for a while. So in that event, what we want to do is make sure that we're taking, I think, you know, Roxanne gives some good examples of that. Everything we've learned over the last three months, if we need to transition into a virtual environment, you know, we're able to do that much more effectively. Then, and, and we did as well as we could this year, but we want to be smarter and, and, and better with it as we're moving forward. So, but just being able to plan for those as we can, those transition points is the, is going to be really important. And, and we also know that there's, you know, a lot of staff and a lot of students with some underlying health conditions that, you know, rightfully will have May have some concerns in coming back right away until we kind of see how the environment is. And so we'll have to make those accommodations and really do some outreach in August. I think once we have some definition, some pretty clear definition as well as we can in this environment about how we're going to open up. Start to just take an inventory then of who's actually coming back because students still, still have a right to an education and, and we need to be able to serve them. And if they're not comfortable, you know, in, in the environment, Iris and we'll have to figure out potentially some, some blended ways That they wouldn't be able to, you know, come to class and still learn virtually. So that'll be part of the challenge from a curriculum instruction thing is, is how do we, how do we maintain a potential virtual environment While primarily teaching face to face. That puts a tremendous weight from a teaching standpoint and from a technology standpoint. And those are a lot of the nuances that we have to kind of think through. And, and then be able to provide you with, with recommendations that we think are most Going to be most of beginning of August, when we have time to communicate that and then be able to plan accordingly.
Okay, because I was, you touched on what was going to be my next question actually regarding, well, even if, let's say we do get to the Place we all hope to get to, which is face to face again. But we are going to have kids who aren't comfortable coming back, but we also might have some teachers and staff. Do, are we going to be analyzing those potential situations as well where, you know, we have a teacher that maybe a high-risk Health, has a, a high risk for infection, would, would we have to be considering those scenarios as well? Or what, what impact would that have?
Absolutely. And, and honestly, that's one of our Achilles' heels, obviously. Absolutely. And honestly, that's one of our Achilles' heels, obviously, is, you know, high quality staff in the classroom. And so if we're, you know, in a scenario where we have, you know, staff members that are not willing, you know, feeling from their situation, comfortable coming back. Again, there's, there's some leave that we can work through just from an HR standpoint. But when we're thinking about just teaching and learning, you know, what do we need to set up then for them? Does it make sense to be able to do some, you know, instruction from their homes? So, well, if they're not sick, if it's truly just the, the risk of being in the environment, I think we've got to think through what that looks like. And then, so that's, that's one scenario. And then the other piece, I think, is as we potentially would have a case break, you know, during the year. And for example, if it's a high school student who, you know, tests positive, for example, has seven classes a day and, you know, has exposure, you know, then, then what, right? So then, then if you, if you potentially had exposure to seven different teachers and that many students during the day, that's very problematic. And that's one student in a, in a group, you know, six hundred and fifty kids. So those are the scenarios that we're working through. Some of that conversation is around flow and contact with kids and how much can we, you know, restrict that? Play the, the, the process, obviously that Pablo knows well of, if you test positive, is that contact tracing? So who do you go back to? So the less people that, that, that you can back, you know, certainly the better for everybody. So, yeah, there's, there's many layers to it. And I think at the end of the day, we're just going to do the best we can. We're going to take advice from health department. And our colleagues who are doing this work around the country and across the world and apply that as best we can to our building, using our staff, use our guidance, using our community expertise. And have something, you know, ready for our kids on September first.
And then my last point, thank you for that. My last point was regarding the community expertise. I know we've got twelve teachers that we're going to be relying upon for the work group, another eight parents that you mentioned, a couple of board members, I think that's up to twenty-two, then your leadership team. What, what community members are you, are included in that group as well?
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at some healthcare officials. So people that would have, you know, some, some expertise in the COVID, COVID era, whether it's through, you know, administration, which is firsthand knowledge, you know, working, working in medical environments type of thing.
Okay, that's why I was asking. Because I know in a couple of meetings ago, we had, or actually it was the town hall, right? Peru, I think there is a infectious disease doctor that was, that was part of that call, correct?
Yes, but I think, and some of those people have, I think, reached out to Brian.
Okay, that's, that's all I was asking. Perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
Pablo, Hillary? No, Emily? Okay. Oh, you do have a question? Okay.
One quick question that occurred to me as Brian was talking about. If we do return to in-person school, but there are students who opt out, do we have any federal or state guidance yet in terms of what our actual like obligation would be to those students? If you, you know, as you referenced, have a right to an education, but if we're fully back in session and they just say, you know, even though the health recommendation is that it's okay, we don't feel comfortable, do, is there any sort of, like, who would make the decision on what, what our obligation is?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would need to make that decision. What, so there, there may be some guidance from the DPI and I shouldn't say we locally. What our commitment is, is to make sure that our kids are getting the materials, are getting the instruction as best we can. So you've talked about, you know, are there scenarios where we're live streaming classrooms, you know, and, and that type of thing? So it'd be a kind of a synchronous, a synchronous environment, assuming that the student isn't sick necessarily, but is just not comfortable being in the environment, that we, you know, design some, some synchronous opportunities as we would move forward. So that's something that we've been talking to Mickey about. And you'd probably do that for all classes necessarily. But for, you know, especially our core classes, we'd want to make sure that we're, that we're doing that. So, you know, as much as, as much as possible. And, and then part of it will fall back on, you know, what have we learned from the virtual experiences this year? And how can we just apply that to students that would be, would be out? But as much as we can, if we have teachers in buildings face to face with kids, we'd like to duplicate that environment if possible. But, you know, I'll be honest, I mean, that's, that's going to be, that is one of the, the pressure points that we've been talking through, that I've been talking through with my colleagues. And that, you know, starts to be difficult. Like if we're all face to face and we're all virtual, like that feels like at least some like
Right.
definition feels a lot better for everybody. I, that certainly, I, I don't believe that's going to be the reality. I think you're going to have, you know, ten to twenty percent of students potentially that just aren't capable, you know, right out of the gate. And things get rolling, that's what we're going to need to talk through. And that, that's why we've got the work group from, you know, a staff standpoint and from a community standpoint. Because we're going to need parents, you know, we're going to need parent insight, we're going to need staff insight and then be able to, again, put something together that's going to be practical. Certainly not perfect, but, you know, we're committed to make sure we're evolving as we're going.
And it seemed, you know, to your comment too about teachers and, and Clark's comment, I, it feels like it'd be incumbent on that group to identify or the district to understand what number of teachers, you know, being a, not feeling like they can or should return to school would mean we just, you know, go virtual for that school. You know, is it twenty, is it twenty percent? Is it thirty or whatever?
Right, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to talk through that. And we'll do, once we, once we get an idea of what our environment's going to look like, you know, in early autumn, I guess, then we'll do an inventory with our staff so we can more clearly communicate kind of what they'd be walking into. I think if you talk to people now without knowing that, it's hard to say, well, whether I'd be comfortable or not. But in August, we'd like to reach out to all staff and just say, hey, you know, this, this is where we landed. They'll get updates as we're going through the work group, but this is where we landed, you know, knowing this, where are you at, you know, from your situation and applying that. And we also know from the numbers, the COVID numbers, you know, from the August first to September first could be, you know, dramatically different in any direction. So we'll always continue to keep updated, I think, with, with those numbers too. So it's, yeah, it's very layered and complex. But I think this is the right approach. And districts are taking a lot of different approaches to how they're, how they're working through and developing their, their plans. I think this is the right approach. I will say what's been the trend over the last three weeks, three to four weeks, has been away from kind of a state, kind of a state issued, like this is how we're going to do it, you know, badger bounce back plan. Early on, you know, in March and April, you know, we wanted to walk together. And I think a lot of that had to do with the Supreme Court decision, that it's pretty clearly communicated now that this is going to be, you know, a local, it's going to be a local decision. So for me, as soon, as soon as that, as soon as our decision making started to trend toward, you know, towards this being a local, it was important to be able to put together a wide constituency to be able to get that, those perspectives. Then we can bring you, as community representatives, bring you, you know, the, the most thought through plan that we can give.
On the other hand.
Go ahead.
Emily, did you have something else?
No, sorry, just the same things.
Oh, gotcha. No, the, the Supreme Court will change on in July. We'll have a new member and we'll have someone departing. So we know had that decision taken place in July, it would not have gone the way it did. You've talked about, yeah, I really appreciate this, this task force. Especially in light of us talking to some of our peers on other boards in the southeastern Wisconsin area and hearing that, you know, they're, they're kind of in the dark in terms of how decisions are being made. Some have committees. But some are basically leaving it all in the hands of the superintendent. They have no idea, you know, where the wind is blowing. And, and those of us that participated in the meeting the other day, we just kind of smiled that way. We've got a very engaged community. And I guess I really appreciate this, this task force, even though I'm not on it, having been formed. A couple of things I think that y'all will need to think about is, you know, are some classes going to be easier to do than others? I'm thinking particularly, I am concerned about going back in the fall. My own institution, M A T C, we're going to do everything we can online. My kids would kill me if that were the case in Shorewood this year. And I know that the effort is for it to be done very safely. But I do think there's some courses that may not be as, as easily done on, in person because of exposure factor. So, you know, I suspect you'll probably go down through, through different course levels and, and look to see what the risk factor is for some of the different courses. Could you tell us just quickly, you know, how, are you envisioning that, you know, we'll kind of do Whitefish Bay and Shorewood and MPS? We're all going to kind of go back as, as a region in a similar fashion? Or is it going to be kind of the Wild West and every district's going to do what they, what they deem appropriate?
So I, I would say at, at some level, there's going to be some uniformity. At, at least in MPS is, you know, so at, you know, I think Milwaukee County and their own, you know, health advisors. The North Shore Health Director is really working through, I mean, she's our main contact. So myself and Whitefish Bay, all the Nicolay schools, through Port Washington, Grafton, Northern Elzaki, although they're, they've got a director. We're hearing, we're having calls twice a week and we're hearing a very similar data. So as far as like whether or not people would be fully virtual or not, I would say that we'd be in, in sync with that. That I don't anticipate like us being fully virtual and Whitefish Bay being face to face. Like I, I don't see that. I think it's the type of application that you would have, like in a face to face environment where there might be districts that are comfortable doing some kind of blended approach that kids would go to school every other day on. And there'd be other places that, that wouldn't be comfortable with that. So, so I think there'll be, again, like I said, some uniformity. But, and I wouldn't necessarily call it the Wild West because I think we're, we're all using, you know, kind of our, our best health knowledge that we have. But we also know that we're working for, in some cases, pretty dramatically different constituencies and how our communities are. And, and then applications to our staffs, you know, our, our staff, staff certainly are different, have different needs at some levels. So just being responsive to that, I would say, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, thanks. Last COVID update is around the rec programs. And I see Jody Brooks is with us tonight.
Yeah, so I asked Jody to, to be here. So one of the things we've been monitoring, Jody and I have been monitoring closely is just our ability to, to have as much summer programming as possible, knowing that the campuses and programming is closed through June thirtieth. Thinking about what July first looks like. So Jody's been in regular communication with his peers on the North Shore and beyond, along with, you know, his staff, working with other staff that are in rec departments, facilities and trying to, again, in a safe environment, be able to, to push forward with some programming. So, so Jody and I have a meeting with his department this Friday to make some final decisions around, you know, what we can and can't offer. And I thought Jody just speak a little bit to what we're looking at at this point.
Yeah, we, we have a reopening plan. It's actually, I think, reached page twenty today. There's five different categories, childcare, enrichment programs, youth sports, fitness center and the pool operations. So we've all, you know, reached out to, like Brian mentioned, our, our peers and the, the various organizations that, you know, CDC, W E D C, DHS, N S H D. Who else? There's like five or six different groups that we pay attention to. Sometimes they give us the same information, other times it's a little varied to determine how we're going to go about opening back up. Right now, the, the game plan is anything indoors would be ten people or fewer in the classroom. Anything outdoors theoretically, and this is, you know, assuming that things improve a little bit between now and July sixth, would be fifty and fewer outdoors with social distancing, which would mean we could do our majors and minors program, potentially a basketball program, mountain biking. We have a mountain biking program in the summertime. Some of those programs we'd be able to hold. Some others that just, you know, and when Pablo mentioned that you'd look at your curriculum and determine what makes sense and what doesn't. The one thing I, I kind of, it breaks my heart because it's one of our most popular programs, but I think we're probably going to have to cancel cardboard boat building. You know, just because it's, the kids work with each other, they're in a confined area, the pool probably can't have all that many people in it at one time. So we will pay attention, program to program on what makes sense. To be honest, the, the probably area we're going to struggle with the most is the pool. Because right now, depending on how we interpret different information, we could have as many as four staff members to accommodate six or seven swimmers. You know, they, and again, it's interpretation of, of the information and the best practices. But we very well may need two lifeguards at any time, potentially attendance at the door and in the locker rooms, if we offer the locker rooms. And, yeah, so, you know, they're, like I said, and the, the fitness center, we feel pretty comfortable with. Our plan for the fitness center was sent out to the fitness center members yesterday. And it was shared on the, the Facebook page. So we feel pretty comfortable. We're going to open up the fitness center at five AM July one. And then we'll start programming July sixth. The pool, we will need to take a little more time to train. We've missed out on some recertifications for our staff because we haven't had access to the pool that were scheduled in April and May. And then eventually we hope to open it up for, for lap swimming. We wouldn't have open swimming for families, obviously. We wouldn't offer the hot tub and we would lock the saunas. So I know it's kind of a lot of varied information, but it gives you a little bit of an idea of where we are right now.
Thanks, Jody. Hillary, did you have a question?
It was more just a comment. Jody, I, I got the fitness center's email today or, you know, this was today. And I just wanted to, to kind of compliment you and David on it because I did think it was really comprehensive. I thought it was clear. I thought it really hit, you know, just all the points that perhaps we want to consider as we talk about how we're going to reopen things and how we're going to cover things and, you know, the cleaning and the capacity issues, all those things. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Do you anticipate to, I know we've lost so many of our facility rentals and other scheduling things, you know, during all of this? So when you said the, the sixth would open up for programming, is that for all those community partnerships that have rentals and things through our facilities as well? Or will that be longer too?
Potentially. That's a discussion we're going to have on Friday would be the, the facility situation. To be honest, we've had some questions about programming and we've just kind of told people, we're, we're not quite sure yet, you know, the people who want to rent for different activities, we're just not sure where we're at yet. But, yeah, you know, we, we do have the, the pretty good sized table tennis group. We have some basketball rentals. We have several rentals that, yeah, we, we will have to determine when we feel comfortable that they can come back in. Because we're not sure what, you know, what kind of staffing we'd be able to have to clean up after those groups, you know, to disinfect, to sanitize. When the basketball program gets over in Lake Bluff, you know, at, at nine thirty at night, those kind of things. you know, to disinfect, to sanitize when the basketball program gets over in Lake Bluff, you know, at, at 9:30 at night, those kinds of things. And yes, David spearheaded a great chunk of the fitness center. And so he's, he did a great job with that plan. We shared it with our fitness center advisory group last week and they were, they were also complimentary. We will probably plan on closing the fitness center, 1:30 to 2:30 roughly every day for a deep clean. And we're going to clean hourly. And we're going to limit the number of people in, in different areas. The only one that I think it could theoretically affect is the weight room. We may keep that to eight. To be honest, the capacities, even at 25% in that building, we're, we're going to be able to accommodate everybody. The capacities are, I, you know, would allow for 100 to 150 people at 25%. And at no point are we ever, you know, at that, that net number. So we should be good to go. Everything's distanced appropriately. The aerobics room has cardio equipment right now and we will not have aerobic classes in there right away. So yeah, the, the plan for the fitness center is, is I'm very happy with where we're at right now with the fitness center.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? No?
I guess, like I said, the only thing I would mention is where we might see some pushback is the pool because we will be a little more deliberate with how we open, open the pool. And I had discussions today with Nicolay and Whitefish Bay and will again tomorrow to see, you know, okay, and statewide, to be honest, Megan Phelan has been on countless aquatics calls. And, you know, I've been on several calls, but as far as aquatics goes, she's been on a ton of those and stays up to date as possible. So we will be deliberate about opening the pools. The, we've been in contact with the swim club and, you know, we're going to try to do our best to accommodate that group. And I think we'll be able to relatively quickly, the, the big part will be the sanitization and the expectations that their parent group has. And if, if we'll be able to pull that off with our staffing.
Great, thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the COVID update. Moving on to the 1920 budget year to date presentation from Marta. She gave us an executive summary and the report. And we had asked specifically to hear from her about the maintenance budget. So is there anything you want to highlight from either of those documents, Marta?
I just wanted to say that even though, you know, there is a maintenance budget, it's only 450,000. It's not a lot of money when you look at the age of the buildings. So it's great that the district passed the $65 million referendum. However, as you know, the needs were much higher. So even with the maintenance budget and the 275, we're doing what we can to keep up with our buildings and just have money day to day operations. So the 275 was really helpful, but it didn't really relieve the maintenance budget just because we still have day to day expenses.
Okay. Emily, did you have a question?
I did, I just, so I was looking at the budget activity year to date, and I apologize, I, I was going to go back and look at what, all we had approved. But I, I think I remember this, so that would have been like that high school roof replacement. Is, is that what's been done so far this year out of that, out of Fund 41?
So the only thing that you had the list that you approved in winter time and part of the list had software purchase and Lake Bluff, the ramp repair, which we did not code to Fund 41 because we're getting insurance money.
Okay.
So you approved of list of, there was no roofs at this time. The roofs amounts are much higher, they're around 300,000. So we're going to have to do those in stages, maybe wait, save some money for two or three years, then be able to do a roof and kind of do the same, spend a little, but have, make sure that there's money set aside each year for a roof. So up to date, we only spent $42,488 from Fund 41. So you approved much larger amount. However, because of COVID, we can't start purchasing.
Okay.
So that's still coming.
Okay.
The expenses that are going to happen in June and July, that will be coded to Fund 41. But the expenses were approved by the board in the winter time.
Okay, I knew we had and I apologize, I didn't go back and look at that. I just, I was trying to figure out what, what all we had already signed off on or what, what was sort of earmarked. So how much do you think we, or would you think would be prudent to set aside as we like create a little roof replacement fund out of that?
So I shared a list, like a 10 year plan with you in the fall. I think that still applies. There's multiple roofs that need to be completed just because there's such a large purchases. You know, that's going to be every three to four years that you'll be able to do a roof. We also talked about doing some tack pointing because only 15% of tack pointing is done through our money. And we know there is other tack pointing to be done as well as taking care of or maintain our parking lots.
Okay. Thanks, I'll look back at that and sorry for not checking that before now. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Clark, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up with Emily was talking about Fund 41. So that, I guess rainy day part of the fund for 41 for roofs, right? And a pun intended, I suppose. That means that we would be setting aside and putting it in, transferring into Fund 41 each, each year, right?
No, so the money is being allocated directly to Fund 41 and
The 275.
The 275, so whatever you, you don't spend is going to sit in a fund balance in Fund 41. You're not going to be transferring, you can pay the bills directly from Fund 41. What happened was we had smaller expenses that we paid from general funds and we wanted to get board approval to be able to spend that money. But because of with the roofs, there are bigger projects, we know ahead of time, we're going to do those. We'll come to the board directly prior to doing those roofs.
Okay, so that stuff, all right. I was confused a little bit because I thought what you were saying was we needed to put more in there so that we could appropriately record those expenses that are going to be more than the 275 into that fund.
You just have to save it over the years, make sure you build up the fund balance to be able to pay for those expenses.
Okay. I have another question on, where did it go here? Fund 21. Can you explain, go over real quick what some of the, where you expect it to end on the, at the end of the fiscal year? We only have one month left, obviously, for the non-capital objects. It seems like we're significantly under budget right now, but do you expect that to catch up? And what would those items be? And also for purchase services, we're already over budget for that fund. And I was just wondering if you could give us a little bit more detail on those two things.
So the purchase services were over budget by $1,500. So I don't think that's an issue. And then non-capital object 400, we have, our budget was 380, 348, we spent 213. So what happened was we received money from seed foundation and a lot of our purchases were canceled. For example, we were purchasing microphones, things like that. Due to COVID, we will not be able to receive those items. So we are going to do the purchasing over the summertime. So it might cross the calendar year, but it will still be completed before school starts. So that's not a concern.
Okay, and that was my next question for clarification. The stuff that we had to delay purchasing on that might look, you know, technically, when you run the report at the end of June, we need to make sure we're paying attention to those things that we still needed to pay for, but have been delayed, right? And you're able to close books and still apply that to the June 30 fiscal year, correct?
Well, the rule is if you didn't spend it prior to, if you didn't receive the item, you know, if you just ordered it, it really should look into prepaid for next year. So it depends when we're receiving the item. What I have told the principals is that if they were not able to spend their budget because the purchases were canceled, they can carry over that money to next school year. So nobody's going to lose anything. We're still going to order those items over the summertime so ready for students back in September.
Okay, and are any of those things, now there's a question. Are any of those things, things that we can not purchase and save that money to help us out for next year?
So, you know, I think that a lot of the items that we wanted to purchase were bigger ticket items. So for example, like a good example is replacing the microphones. That's not something that you can just not do it at some point. And there was a donation coming, we definitely have a need to replace that. The same thing has to do with a lot of purchases are grant funded. We definitely want to take advantage of purchasing those items because if we don't spend that grant, if we don't purchase the items, we don't get the money.
Right. I'm sorry, I know these monies, these funds are earmarked. Has any of those donations that have come in, has anybody given us any, I guess, leeway to say what you can? I guess what I'm saying is I know they're donations and they're earmarked for specific functions. But I'm wondering if any of those donations can be used for things that were unforeseen, but still fit the, the, the spirit of what the donor wanted us to spend it on. Meaning, I'm trying to be creative here because I know there's going to be some things that we, we just don't know about, right? And so is there any, I guess, leeway is not the right word, but is there anything we can do with that? Because I know we can't use that money to go say, spend it on curriculum time stuff when it wasn't dedicated that way.
So I think our teachers are being fiercely responsible and nobody's ordering anything just to have it. You know, the things that we're purchasing right now are supporting our online learning and back to school replenish the supplies that we used up throughout the year. So, you know, we're buying what we have to buy. Nobody is doing any purchasing just because they have money left.
No, no, I didn't, sorry if that's what I was, you thought I was implying. No, that's not what I, that's not what I was implying. I was just was trying to make sure, wondering if there were ways that we could hold off on some things until we had a better picture of what it was we are looking at for next year, that's all.
We're not doing any major purchasing that we didn't anticipate. Nothing new is being purchased right now, just kind of resuming the purchasing from March.
Got it, all right, thank you.
And again, Clark, as we look at, you know, some of that CARES Fund Act and the federal money that's coming in, there's quite a bit of leeway in the application of that. I mean, it needs to be towards, you know, schools and responses to our new environment. But whether that's curriculum instruction related or facilities related, there's quite a bit of flexibility in that space.
That's helpful.
Hillary, did you have a question?
Yeah, can I ask a non-maintenance budget question? Of course. You know, we, a couple of us were on the Public Policy Forum webinar on Friday. And one thing that came up in there that was kind of shocking to me, which I guess I should have remembered this, that there can be a budget repair bill to the existing two-year biennium. If our state expenditures exceed our revenues by a certain percentage, our legislators can go back in and look at this biennium's budget and start cutting. So I'm wondering, you know, as we've had budget conversations, we've looked at potential budget cuts to the next biennium. But that was sort of shocking to me to think that, no, it could be this biennium, that we could, you know, be starting a budget with the start of a school year and then have budget cuts, the potential of that. So I'm wondering what information or what's being said kind of in your, you know, administrator groups and, and sort of your professional groups to prepare for that or what you're hearing in that regard? Because that changes the budget dynamic quite significantly if we're trying to put something together, you know, for, for the year when we have contracts out and other things. I just, I'm hoping that that's on the, somewhere on the landscape that you're looking at.
Yeah, I, I can start and Marta, you can follow up too. Yeah, no, that, that is the landscape that we're looking at. I, I, we're approaching it and, and every signal that I get from our state associations, you know, is that we're looking at the very strong likelihood of a budget repair bill sometime in the near future that's going to land us probably with a zero dollar increase. So that's, and when I say zero dollar increase, that's per pupil on what we would have anticipated in the second year of this biennium, which was $179 per student. So to go from $179 per student increase to a zero increase per student is, is significant and is likely. So that is, that is a big deal. And I think, you know, really hits home at the, you know, the projected revenue losses, I think, were, you know, a couple billion, I think, the last time the Legislative Fiscal Bureau did, did the review from just tax collections. And so I think that's, that's the reality we have to live in when we're, you know, finalizing this budget for this year. It's not great. And we'd rather not do it. And we were in, in excellent shape in February as we're, you know, putting together that budget and, and what we were, believe we were able to allocate. But that has changed significantly over the last three months. So everything that I'm hearing is, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And, and it's likely going to be right around that zero dollar, zero dollar mark. So, Marta.
I just want to add that the other discussion that I had with CISO and business managers as well as G P I and other state organizations is that the first year, 2021 is concerning, but also 2122. Because that's going to be a domino effect. This is not just going to be a one-year issue. And in addition, we're losing money per people funding, but also the special education is not going up. That, you know, we had money for increasing open enrollment, that doesn't look like it's going to increase. We're losing interest income. I mean, there's so many other things. And in addition to that, we're not sure what's going to happen to our rental income, to our fee collection. So it's not just revenues, you know, that from the state they're affected, but also local. So at this point, I really, you know, I don't have any answers. I think that as a district, we have to be cautious in terms of next year salary increases, things of that nature and hold off until we know more. Just because we don't, we, at this point, we know nothing in terms of the funding. And just want to make sure that, you know, that the Sherwood School District is going to be financially strong no matter what. And the fund balance is not large enough to absorb huge losses. So I think the best thing the board can do right now is just, just wait.
Yeah, I think that that is kind of sage advice. And I do, I do want to reiterate, and I know we're losing you as of Friday, but I think this is an opportunity to kind of educate our community about the potential impact of that and what that looks like. Because, you know, as we've been, I, I just think this is a huge advocacy opportunity because those, those are real cuts. And I get that, you know, public education and education funding are some of the biggest pieces of the pie in the state budget. But to think about how much of a cut that would be to our budget and, and all of those unknowns, you know, that affects our students, that affects every one of our students. And so I think it's kind of incumbent upon us to make sure that our community understands how those impacts and the potential of those impacts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Marta, can I follow up on the, you mentioned the ramp at Lake Bluff? And just, can you give us the status, the update on that? In terms of recouping the cost?
So at this point, I don't have any update. The letter's going out with scalded out demands. On my behalf of the school district that there is clear deadline on when the money has to be received. Otherwise, the district uh, has a right to take illegal action. So, um, I am planning on making sure that Brian kind of knows the dates and when to follow up. And you know, hopefully money will be received, but if not, then the follow-up is gonna be needed.
Okay, thanks. Um, any other questions? I wanna just, oh, Clark, do you have another question? No, I just wanted to, um, you know, also second what Hillary said, we were going, we're gonna miss you. Congrat- you know, good, best of luck on your new job. And um, thank you for all you've done for the district this last year. So, but good luck. And um, yeah, it's been great.
I just wanna say thank you for the last ten months. And for everything that you do. I know your job is not easy for Bryant, for um, you know, your support for us in the month. I definitely will miss Sherwood and um, you know, hopefully you'll find a replacement and. You know, move, move forward with this whole COVID nineteen and. Just like any other school in Wisconsin trying to figure things out. So again, thank you for your support.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, we're going to table item D. And so next up is Brian's going to give a report on uh, the interim Business Services and Human Resources Director.
Yep, so, so as we've gone through the interview process for Marta's replacement. So we did uh, interviews with two rounds of initial candidates. And unfortunately, both of those rounds um, came up short of uh, being able to have a candidate that. Met our expectations to uh, to move into Marta's position, um, starting July first. So, um, I'm currently in conversations uh, with uh, financial services. Who can provide some support around uh, state reporting, establishing a levy. Um, and uh, some of our financial um, aspects that we'd have, uh, along with um. Talking to the State Association and through some networking with my colleagues, um, to see if there are any um. That may be interested in uh, serving this position. Typically, if a retiree were to come on just due to um, some uh, limitations with their pension. Would be kind of a couple days a week um, that we would schedule them uh, in the office to be able to help support. Office functions, um, and to be able to keep things, uh, keep things moving. So, um, so that's currently, um, currently in the works, um, as we're uh, moving forward. So I hope to have uh, somebody uh, as soon as possible, um, but I need to just continue to keep working on that. Some early options did not uh, not work out as uh, as we had hoped. So, um, so that is the update at this point. As soon as we uh, you know, have uh, some interim interest. I'll make sure that we um, take care of that as expeditiously as possible. In the meantime, I'm just, I'm spending time in mu- with Marta's transition and her staff. This week to finish out, um, you know, any uh, responsibilities that uh, Marta can help support. And then I'd be setting up some time with that office just to check in with them on a regular basis. Um, until we can get uh, some uh, some interim support there. Also, just outlining some duties, specifically talking through uh, human resources. Cause that's an area um, that we don't necessarily have anybody directly designated to in that office versus accounting and accounts receivable. Payable, um, and uh, you know, benefits. So I'll be outlining kind of how uh, we plan on supporting, um, you know, our human resource aspect, uh, which will. You know, either be a delegation into our current um, staff. Or um, if you wanna talk about bringing on a human manager, um, that might be something that we take a look at too. So I'll, I'll bring us more details as we're forward with that.
Um, so can I ask, like, when, would you give us the details at the next board meeting or at the first July meeting?
Um, I would say probably the first meeting in July. Uh, I mean, I can keep you updated kind of as we're making progress. But uh, I'll likely have um, have more details at that first meeting in July.
Okay, cause I guess I would like, I think, for the board to be able to see all the, like, in writing, like, who's managing what? And who's responsible for what? So we have a better sense of all the different pieces and who you, who's reporting to you and, you know, like.
Yeah.
What the, how those responsibilities are being delegated.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then also, I guess, maybe we would know by then if we have some, if there, who is gonna be coming in as interim support. So.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And we hope to be able to do an introduction then or or in the, in the near future after that. Yeah, and that's, that's a communication, as you had mentioned, uh, kind of a, a org chart, if you will, of of how things would lay out. Would be something that'll be important to get the staff to. So a- as we are, are progressing through the summer. So we know exactly uh, who's, who's responsible for what, so.
Okay, any other questions? Emily, do you have a question?
Oh, well, you actually took, you took mine and then Brian anticipated the other question, which was just letting staff know where to go with, you know, concerns. I think the only other piece. It's not a small one that I, you know, I'm concerned about, but we've talked about too, is just sort of how we mitigate the. The uh, lack of a business manager being in place when we are facing this budget. Uncertainty and um, and some pretty dire scenarios. It, I, it's just hard for me to imagine a consultant, even under the best of circumstances, coming in and really being able to effectively advise us. And um, so I'd like to, you know, get a sense of how we plan on approaching that, whether it's, you know, a work group or. Even an informal, you know, network of former business managers, anything that we can do to just um, make sure that we're getting really. You know, some, some expert advice and guidance uh, when we are faced with. Unfortunately, making some, some tough decisions potentially.
Sure, yeah, and that's, that's something, um, that's something we can talk about. Now, certainly, um, you know, like Baird Financial Services and some of their consulting. You know, most of them are former business managers and are very in tune. I mean, they, they do a lot of this interim work and are very in tune with kind of the contemporary needs. Um, and I also have Marta's cell number, um, in case we need to reach back. A little bit to help, like, consult a little bit. I promise not to do that much, but. But uh, yeah, those are, those are really good points as we're, as we're moving into this that um. That I'll be spending some time on, um, now, um, to prepare for uh. You know, a report in July that I can bring to you.
Thanks.
And Hillary, did you have a question?
Sorry, yeah, well, I, in that vein, I just, I'm, I'm curious about. Whether there would be a benefit, uh, you know, we've had some candidates, my understanding is that have come, you know, close to the top. And whether it is better to perhaps approach an interim business manager from any of those candidates. I am, just given our other conversations, feeling quite the pressure of having that position vacant for very long. And even if there is an expertise coming from Baird or coming from, you know, a, a retired business manager, those, those. That, those options aren't full-time. Those aren't people in the office. Those aren't people. You know, that I, I, I think of any year to not have somebody in this position, this right now just doesn't sit well with me. So, um, I'm just curious if though that's been discussed or considered at all.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that honestly, when we look at our pools. It's, our pools are not um, strong as we get it. And I, I, um, I would not be comfortable. I, I think in, in many ways, it might be more work. Even in, in an interim space, um, to be able to uh, to bring some of the candidates that we had, that we had in. So. And we also have kept the, kept the posting open, so as we potentially would have additional requests. What happened after the first round is that, you know, we went through the candidates, had a failed search. The following weekend, some people had applied, so as word would get out or as people um, become interested. For whatever reason, um, you know, we can continue to, to navigate that and see uh, see if there's people out there. But yeah, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's very concerning to me also. It's certainly something that, um, that we're gonna have to make sure, that I will need to make sure that is, you know, tightened up. But uh, again, you know, I think bringing somebody in this position that could be detrimental. To our processes in our district, I, I don't think is in our best interests.
Yeah, well, and I would agree with that. We don't want someone who's going to be. Yes, agreed.
Okay, so, um, we'll hear, I guess, uh, and if we can, I guess I'll ask you to give us an update kind of on the process at the next meeting. But then like a full um, transition plan, interim plan, um, at the July meeting.
May I, a really quick related question? Did we get word yet about what we're able and required to do as far as the annual meeting?
Um, I have, I have not had that conversation yet. I was going to, um, that's on my agenda to talk with the, um, some of the North Shore super. To see if they've had that, cause some of them have annual meetings that are coming up. I don't know if, have you had any?
I lived in Wasby and I haven't seen anything, but um, yet.
Okay.
Posted there, but I could ask Dan Ross Miller next time we have our SWASO meeting. He probably would know, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know, I think McQuinn has theirs usually in, in July, so they're, they're probably. I think as soon as school gets out this week, I think that's, keep some people's focus will be there, so I can check.
Maybe we could just have it on the football ball field and everybody stand in a. Tep desk where. Raise your hand if you're okay with the tax levy.
Right, right.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, all right, so up next is uh, the superintendent's consent agenda. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Thanks, Pablo. Second for Emily. Um, and then I will take a roll call vote, uh, in favor, Hillary.
Hi.
Emily?
Hi.
Clark?
Hi.
Pablo?
Hi.
And I from Paru. Um, thank you guys. Um, all right, so we're a little, I guess, a lot late now for public comments, sorry. Um, public comments number two. Same process. If you'd like to uh, make a comment at this point. Please unmute yourself and I will call on you. See if I can see this. We will have one more opportunity for public comments, I would say probably in thirty minutes. Okay, I think Julie, I see your phone is unmuted. Do you wanna make another comment? I'm gonna know people's phone numbers by the end of this.
I do. Hold on a second.
Go ahead.
Am I unmuted? Okay. Yeah, there's no shortage of opinions at my house. You can count on me. Let's see, I had a couple questions about what you were discussing earlier, and I know you're not gonna answer them, but I'm gonna put them out there anyway. So one of them was about families who don't elect to send their students back in September. And I wondered how that impacted. I know that there are head counts that determine funding. And I wondered how that impacts funding. And so I think it was Emily, it's hard to tell sometimes, um, just listening to voices. But I think Emily was asking, you know, what the obligation is. And it seems like there's a couple, there's many layers to that, right? There's the obligation, but there's also like, if, you know, pa- maybe notifying parents. As soon as possible, you know, it sounds like that August might be, beginning of August might be a good time. Notify parents of, you know, what are your options if that's your choice? Like, are you under the umbrella of the school district or are you homeschooling? And then, you know, the, they need some time, obviously, to, to ramp up if they're gonna be kind of needing to, to go it. Alone. And so I guess I was just thinking about that. And then I was thinking about the staff and that the staff who choose to. You know, that they're not comfortable. You know, there could be a match there, right? There could be staff who don't feel comfortable coming in. There could be families that don't come, feel comfortable coming in. And there could be, you know, uh, you know, some sort of match there where the staff are helping facilitate the learning. At least partially of those who are at home. So I was just thinking about that. The other thing is that, I know this may sound really silly, but. There was so much discussion in these last couple years about the windows at Lake Bluff. And that the windows were, you know, people couldn't open their windows, people couldn't close their windows. And I just didn't know if, like, when we're talking about the ventilation and airflow at Lake Bluff. When are they gonna fix the windows or have they already been fixed? Um, and then the other question. Is I got pulled away by my son during part of the discussion that was talking about um, some of the purchases. I think Hillary asked a question about, you know, when are these purchases gonna be made? Things like hand washing stations, et cetera. And then I, I missed a little bit and then it, then I heard. Brian, I think I heard you saying that some of these things won't be in place by September one. And I just think that now is the time, right, to make the purchases of things that we know that we're gonna need. And then my last, my last statement is that I feel like um, HR is such an important function. And when I've heard discussions about, when I was hearing the discussion, I feel like HR is, is an important function. And if a professional HR person um, is running HR, you can feel that in an organization. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Julie. I will say that, so the questions you had about the facility, uh, the reopening school stuff will probably be answered more fully as the work group starts working through some of those issues. We do, uh, windows at Lake Bluff is part of our facilities. That's like work that's happening at Lake Bluff, so that is on the list of things that is happening there. So, um, thank you. Thank you again for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other? Comments? Okay, not seeing any right now, so I'm gonna go ahead and move forth the agenda. There still will be one more opportunity for comments. Okay, so up next is a discussion of our last virtual town hall. And so I wanted to get a sense, we had talked about having one at the end of the school year, which is this week. I felt like the last one we did went really well, um, and so I wanted to see what people thought were about having one more, you know, maybe next week. Or do you think people are gonna be like in full, I don't know, I don't even know if people are in summer mode anymore, so. But um, thoughts on our, like, one more town hall linkage?
I do think it would be good, and I think just given um, kind of the context of. Concerns, you know, thinking through the conversation we had earlier about how many parents had expressed an interest in being on the work group. And I'm just thinking through conversations that I've had with parents, especially working parents who are like, ah, are we not gonna know anything till August? Cause, you know, I might have to go to back to work, just, you know, there's so many different layers and different things to all of this. I do think, even if it's a, as perhaps not ideal time to do a virtual town hall. I do think that there's so much on parents' minds these days that I think it still would be good. And um, you know.
Do you think next week is fine?
I think next week is fine, I think, yeah, and especially as our work continues through the summer and, you know, our administrators' work continues. I do, you know, I think it's, it's still a, a good time to do it, and I think next week would be, would be good.
Okay. Everybody else feeling, okay? All right, Pablo, Clark, yay. All right, so I'll work on making that happen for next week. I'll check in with Kelly and you guys on dates to do that.
I could, I would recommend, um, we could go back to, to Google Hangouts. When I was sharing my concerns with um, the format and we, we moved to Zoom. This is basically the same thing as we were doing before because people were only able to log or to call in. And view us or view like the student presentation that we had early on. We could easily, just like we ask people to unmute themselves. They can do what we do, which is, you know, we mute ourselves when we're not talking, we unmute when we speak. But to have their video available, I think, especially for a town. But to have their video available, I think, especially for a town hall, which we've typically done, sitting in a circle. I find it a little bit awkward for it just to be us, the talking heads, and then people have to call in.
Right, I agree.
So I'd say for this.
I'll check in with Maggie about how to do that.
Go back to Google meets, but then give them the link so that they can also view us.
Okay.
That's where we fell short today.
Okay. Um, all right, I'll work on that. Um. Clark, do you have an HRC update? I can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Wait, what happened?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, my head, my headset was running out of battery again. And so I was trying to go on my computer, it wouldn't work. My apologies. Yes, the HRC, we had a meeting on the fourth. It was a special meeting to discuss trick or treating. And the, the final vote on that was, it was a four to one vote to recommend trick or treating to stay on Sundays, but change the time two to five. And the village had requested the HRC to, to get feedback on that. So that's what they, that's what they ended up putting on. The only caveat to that right now is that this year, I think they're going, one of the options they'll be considering is doing it on Saturday because Halloween actually falls on Saturday this year. But the key point was they wanted to keep it at a mid afternoon timeframe for accessibility to not only Shorewood students, but a lot of the neighboring kids who take advantage of Shorewood trick or treating as well, or have a better opportunity to take advantage of it. The other item that was supposed to be on the agenda was a discussion about potentially organizing a forum, a community forum to talk about the, the recent protests and the state of our community today and in our country today, actually. But that, we didn't quite get to that. So there's potentially going to be another special meeting here on the 15th. So if that happens, I'll let you know. The other piece that was, is notable, and I think I mentioned this before, there's the new village liaison, and that is trustee Warren.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then I have on here SWASA board member meeting update. So there were two meetings last Friday for the SWASA board. One was like specifically for their, their board member meeting that they have. And I guess the only thing that I want to share, which I think we've already kind of started talking about is Pablo mentioned this. I thought it was interesting and I guess useful to hear that almost all the districts that are on in SWASA are doing a very similar process of pulling together some sort of work group to kind of think about how to reopening, how to reopen schools. So some sort of community, staff, teacher, board, kind of conglomerate like thinking about this. And they're all kind of in the same place we are. So I think it'll be helpful to kind of continue those conversations with them to see what they're learning from the board perspective about how to move forward. You know, to Hillary's point, I think one of the things that also came out of that meeting for me was thinking about if we don't go back to school or we do some sort of staggered school, I guess it was more of a staggered school plan, what's our obligation? Or like, what would we do in terms of childcare for parents? I mean, I think the expectation, at least what I'm hearing is that most parents imagine themselves being back at work in September. And so what does that look like for us? If we only plan to have students in buildings half the time? The other thing that they brought up, which I thought was interesting, was that there could, there's like, there could be a teacher shortage, especially substitute teachers. You know, and kind of, so I think they, I think they all brought up some, I think what I thought was interesting dynamics that will, I think, I can bring to the work group. But I think things that continue to be kind of swirling in other people's minds about what the logistics, logistics are going to look like. Pablo and Clark were on that call. I don't know if there was anything else that you guys wanted to highlight from that?
I mean, you, you, I, I kind of hit some of the points and you reiterated them, so.
No, I'm good.
It, it made me, I would just reiterate, I'm going to say it again, that it made me feel very confident in the leadership and what we're doing in Shorewood or what's being done in Shorewood, especially when we heard some of, some of the folks ask questions like, do we have any voice in this? Do we have, I mean, these are board members. These aren't like just community members. These are board members wondering like, do we have a say in anything? Or do we just have to do what the superintendent says? And because they, you know, there's some places there's just a complete lack of committee and things. So I, I wasn't surprised that where we're at, but it was almost like a, I feel bad to like relish in other districts that are as, as, as a, maybe democratic as ours. But I think it was points for Shorewood after hearing what other districts are doing.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then I think, I don't know. I know Hillary and Clark and Pablo, I think you guys were on the call at noon or 12:30 about the budget. I don't know, Emily, if you were on that call. I wasn't. So was there anything that you, and I was able to listen to it afterwards. But, you know, since you were on the call, was there anything that you want to share with us or you felt was compelling?
No, I think the budget conversation was compelling. And I do think just the idea of kind of being as nimble and agile and, you know, concrete in our plan and then also concrete in our plans. And as we communicate things to parents, you know, just the importance of, and I think we do this, I think we've been doing this, but just to remember that, you know, we're in this to try and do the best that we can for our students. And what that looks like, we may have to pivot. And we're considering all options and considering all plans. I think that's how we've approached this, you know, since we've closed our buildings. And so I think that was just as they, as they approached or talked about kind of district, different schools or different school entities that they view have been successful in the last couple of months. Those were just some of the biggest kind of qualifiers of, of schools that have been ready to adapt and evolve. So I think, you know, if we try and keep that in mind and keep the broad view of experts and everything that we are trying to build through the summer, I think, I think we're on a good path. But I do think, you know, we are a member of the Public Policy Forum. I think they do give really good, and these Friday webinars that they are going to be giving, they talked about doing more in terms of education issues and, and education budget issues and those sort of things. So as those become, as those come up on the calendar, it'd be good for us to kind of keep those in mind.
Great, thanks.
Can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead. Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. I, I would say one of the sobering pieces of things for me on those calls, on that budget call, was the fact that you had folks that are tracking this very closely and they're offering their advice for a reason, right? They're, they're, they're the smees in, in a time when nobody knows what really is going to be expert advice. And even their message is, to Hillary's point, be nimble, but their message is we don't know what's going to happen. And so what they're, the gist of the conversation is, is let's continue to talk about it. Here's what we do know. Here's what we know MPS is facing. Here's what we know what the Madison districts are facing. Here's what we know what some smaller districts that were better, better prepared than some were able to do. But in the end, it's be prepared because, try to be prepared as you can for multiple situations because we, even they don't know what to expect. And so it was, it was sobering in a sense that we're not, we're not alone, right? Our world is here, but everybody's kind of in a, a similar boat, even though they might be slightly different. They're, they're all facing some of the same major, major questions. Meaning, don't commit to things until we know a little bit more. So I need to clarify one thing, sorry, on the HRC. Can I go back to that real quick?
Sure.
I gave you the wrong date. The next special meeting is not the 15th. That's the village board meeting where they're going to vote on the trick or treating thing. Then they're, they're trying to do another meeting as early as this Thursday, by next Wednesday at the latest, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Um, okay. Uh, next item is I will take a motion to approve the amended board bylaw 125.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, thank you, Hillary. I will turn it over to Emily to present.
Sure, I'll, I'll try to be quick because of time. But just tried to accomplish here with our amended bylaw, what we talked about, which was staggered terms. So we have sort of one old and one new student board representative and then allow for both of our current student reps to continue if they wish, or reapply to continue. And, and sort of took Paris thinking to heart about maximizing our flexibility. So rather than being prescriptive about, you know, when things would happen or how many, et cetera, just leaving a little bit of flexibility here. So, um, hopefully this works for everyone and happy to hear from Jack and Sadie if they, hopefully you guys had a chance to look at this, but, yeah.
Jack?
Breaking up.
Yeah, I just had a quick question.
We can't really hear you, Jack, sorry. Oh, no, and I'm muted.
Try the chat box chat, Jack, if you can. If you can type in the chat.
Oh, there you are.
Um, so yeah, I just had a quick question. So standard terms again, so like, do me and Sadie have to reapply? Or if we're both saying that we are willing to be the student representatives again, do we just continue being the student representatives through the summer and into the next school year?
What I tried to put in here was allowing for you to return as long as you wish to return, that you. Right.
But do they have to reapply? Like, is there an application process then? No, right? Because then.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the, so it says we'll distribute job description, application and recommendation forms during spring semester? I mean, I guess.
Oh, right.
I don't know. I'd be interested to know what people think about. I mean, I don't know. We could still do that. I just don't know, are we going to try to, try to get somebody this year before fall semester? Or I don't know, like, what were your thoughts on that timeline?
Yeah, that's a good point because we're almost done.
Yeah. And I just, like, this year is just different, so. But at the same time, like, if we, it should probably either have been during spring or summer. I think we could maybe say that, I don't know.
The store summer, like it just, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you can ship it within the next two weeks.
Right. One week.
Yeah, one week.
No, it's three days.
Yeah.
The semester ends in three days.
Jesus.
So like, that's, I mean, yeah.
We could add or summer after the words semester.
Okay. And then I think we will have to rely on Jack and Sadie to really figure out how to connect with students over the summer. I don't know if people read their email or when they start reading their email, but if there's another way for us to connect, like to, because I think just, I mean, I think last time, and you can come to me if I'm wrong, but I feel like Hillary, we asked Tim Kenny to like, like, put out an announcement and like, teachers like recommended people and that teach, like, the school environment was really instrumental in getting people to think about it. Or, and then teachers maybe, I think for Jack, I think I feel like for you, a teacher like told you about it. So I don't know. I just think we need to have some, I think if we just put out an email from the board, people are going to be like.
Right.
What else? Yeah.
No, but I think given that we've done this before, I perhaps even, you know, waiting until August or, you know, after forums and Ps or after, you know, kind of getting back into the kind of thought process of, of this school year would, you know, I feel like as long as we're fair with application timelines that we're perhaps better, I'll say we're, you know, we're sort of better at being able to work through the interviews and work through all of this. So I think if we add the caveat of summer, we'll, we'll be able to, to make it work with, you know, understanding this year is an anomaly.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
Thank you, Emily, for putting that together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is great.
Sure thing.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. I will take, I guess, a new motion for the amended board bylaw 125.
I move we approve the amended bylaw 125 with the addition of the word summer.
Thank you, Hillary.
I second.
Thanks, Clark. All right, I will take a roll call vote for approval. Emily?
Hi.
Pablo?
Hi.
Clark?
Hi.
Hillary?
Hi.
And I from myself. All right, so that's our new bylaw. So I'll ask Kelly to get that on our website then. And I'll put it on our work plan that we need to have the conversation probably at the beginning of August about recruitment for the students. And I think, like I said, I think we can probably ask Tim to help us. And I think Jack and Sadie could be helpful, so. Okay. I will take a motion for approval of the board consent agenda.
I move we approve the board consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thanks. And I will take a roll call vote for in favor. Hillary?
Hi.
Emily?
Hi.
Clark?
Hi.
Pablo?
Hi.
And I from myself, Paru. Okay. So we made it to public comments number three. Anybody would like to unmute themselves? Zero seven five? People are interested in commenting on anything that happened at the board meeting or have questions. You're always welcome to email any of us. Happy to discuss any of these things further with you. I'll wait one more minute. I, I think zero, I don't know who zero seven five is. But.